Before we begin, a few different things. Lieutenant Kootu, he was 24 years of service on the West Warwick Police Department. If anybody wants his information for the Waker funeral, we can get that to you. We can also, you can speak to the chief after the meeting. A couple of different things, if you have cell phones, please put them on vibrate.
Thank you.
If you're gonna speak, please come up to the microphone, say your name, address, and residence, town you live in. And that's it for rules tonight. Thank you. Marion?
Councilman Lachardi?
Here.
Councilman Messier?
Here.
Councilman Pedulla?
Here.
Council Vice President D'Amico?
Here.
Council President Goslin?
Here.
There is a quorum. Citations for the West Warwick Cal Ripken All-Stars?
I think they're out in the hallway. All right, spin around. Ladies and gentlemen, what you have in front of you is this year's 10-year-old Cal Ripken State Champions. Resolved that the West Warwick Town Council commends the entire team for a highly successful season as coaches and players of the West Warwick Cal Ripken All-Star Team, 10-year-old division, whereas you and your team earned the title of 2017 State Champions. Your exemplary dedication, inspirational leadership, and hard work made it possible to attain this extraordinary achievement. Now therefore, the team coaches and the team members are to be congratulated for their fine sportsmanship in Team Spare, which played a large role in their successful season leading to becoming the 2017 West Warwick Cal Ripken All-Star Champions. Be it further resolved that the West Warwick Cal Ripken All-Stars coaching staff and team be commended for the guidance and support which they gave to the team members and the team to develop those qualities of character essential for their success as members of the West Warwick Cal Ripken All-Star Team. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of West Warwick is honored to extend their appreciation, gratitude, and congratulations to coach, the coaches, and players. Called upon all the citizens of the town to congratulate and wish them success in the future. These individuals are coaches Shaun Wallard, Rob Pettis, and manager Paul Moretti. And the players Mark Grover, James Prue, Max Costello, Carl Swanson, Ian Peacock, Jamie Thana, Josh Pettis, Tyler Garofalo, Christopher Busquets, Owen Sterns, Dominic Corolo, and Mason Wallard. I get to see a lot of these kids play all year long because I'm always down at the fields myself. And a lot of people don't realize what coaching is truly about these days. It's not just about, you know, the team, it's about each individual kid dealing with 10, 12 different personalities. So excellent job to the coaches for what they did this year. Excellent job to the kids of the team. Like I said, I've seen some of you guys grow up since T-ball and now you're up in the majors and I'm over at your booth, but hope to see you there soon. So congratulations. Is Max Costello here? Okay, I'll give this to Coach Wallard so he can pass it out. Owen Sterns? He's not here. Everybody's on vacation. Tyler Garofalo? Chris Busquets? James Prue?
Sure went the other way.
Yeah, I know. Ian Peacock's here. Jamie Thana? Location, I know where he is. Mason Wallard? Mark Grover? He's on vacation. Hawaii, right? Carl Swanson's here. Paul Moretti, I think he's working tonight. Right? No, who's he here?
Basketball.
Oh, he's at basketball. Coaching other sport. Rob Pettis? He's not here. And Shaun Wallard. Good job, guys.
Good job, man. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, kids.
Now we expect this every year.
Job, guys. Congratulations.
Thanks, guys.
Now you have to stay here for the next two hours, that's the rule.
Spin around one more time. Good job, guys.
JC 40th anniversary of community services to Jack Lancelata?
Where's Jack? Jack's here.
Jack here?
Yeah.
Jack, come on up.
You wanna read it? Jack, congratulations again. Many of you know Jack Lancelata, he's been involved in the community for many, many years. Jack's a good friend, always there when any one of us ever needed him. He's there for the community. And my hat goes off to Jack for all his accomplishments. And we had this on the agenda last month, but we had, the JCs had a party for him at the Q set. And we had an executive session, so me and Councilman Lachardi, where they had given him the citations. So what we have is just a little presentation on what transpired that day. Where is Jack Lancelata, West Warwick resident and graduate of West Warwick High School and Roger Williams College Law Center of Paralegal Studies? Served as a caseworker under U.S. Senator Claiborne Pell as a paralegal trainer in the Rhode Island Attorney General's Office of Public Protection and Policy Advisor with the Narragansett Bay Commission and a tireless volunteer for the JC corridor. The award-winning Nature Lane and Community Holiday Help Fund, Toys for Tots and Teens, and Change Charities, Candy Cane Exchanges. And where is Jack as the Executive Director of the JC's Alumni Education and Library Foundation? Has provided opportunities and encouragement for young adults to develop their educational, charitable leadership, and community action skills. As a member of the Otic Redevelopment Board and former member of the West Warwick Patuxent River Walkway Project, Regional Stormwater Management Commission, Zoning Review Panel, and Citizens Advisory Committee, Jack has shown his devotion to the Town of West Warwick. And where is Jack has been instrumental in many philanthre- endeavors, giving generously on his own personal time and received the Partners in Philanthropy Award from the Rhode Island Association of Professional Fundraisers and the Presidential Lifetime Service Award from Presidents William Clinton and George H.W. Bush through the Volunteer Center of Rhode Island. Now therefore, for the JC 40th anniversary of community service, the Town Council of the Town of West Warwick is honored to extend their appreciation, gratitude, and congratulations to John "Jack" Lancelata, who has given back so much to the community and for all his contributions to the Town of West Warwick. Jack, it's a mouthful, but you did a lot. Thank you.
Jack, stay where you are, we have Representative Nunes who'd like to come up.
Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate the indulgence. I too missed the event that they had for Jack honoring his service. I just want to recognize his tenacious appetite for public service and not only that, but his ability to get others in the community to serve as well. And, you know, it's really an inspiration to the community and the work that they've done here. And so on one of the last days of our House session this year, we passed a resolution congratulating you and thanking you for your 40 years of devoted and exemplary service to the United States Junior Chamber. And I appreciate your service, it's always been a pleasure to deal with you. And again, I thank you for the indulgence and thank you again, and I wish you well.
Thank you, Jack.
Time, Jack, time.
Well, first of all, I want to thank everyone, the Town Council, the Jersey office, management office, all our department heads.
And of course, the many civic groups in our town is always supportive of not only JCs, but the many groups and the civic activities that we take place. We appreciate that very deeply. Forty years is a long, long time. I always get around and say, can I buy into the JC pension plan? But I don't think that's gonna happen. Yeah, I apologize, last month, we had a little gathering down, as Councilman Pedulla was saying, at the Q set, and we had different dignitaries from the state and also with our JC. So it was kinda an inconvenient time to come up, but I apologize for that. But I thank you again very much for allowing me to be here this evening. Also want to associate my remarks with a moment of silence for Captain Kootu. And also want to congratulate the young Cal Ripken All-Stars for their efforts. I know many, many years ago, I think I played some softball with, or hotball too, with Angelo there, in Natick Junior League, we were on All-Star teams. And we enjoyed all that time. And parks and recreation activities are very, very important. I also want to mention that when I was here, last week I think it was, Councilman Pedulla was asking about the shirts that JCs have. And so I spoke to our treasurer and we were able to develop, I think we got a half dozen of them, so we'd like to present them to the Town Council and to the Town Clerk as well.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Ronnie or David's got them, would you want to come up with them?
Yeah, sure, just hand them all to me. I don't know what the sizes are, but I think they're large and extra large.
Ronnie, look daddy, you know. Small.
No, it's not so small.
I'll wear it proudly, Jack, thank you. Thank you, Ronnie.
Thank you. Did you give me mine already? Large, medium, whatever you have. Thank you, sir.
And Mark, we'll get you one too, Mark.
Yeah, feel comfortable.
We're gonna get 10 one too.
Listen, wear comfortable, sit tight. Thanks, Ronnie. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron, thank you, Dave, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you again, guys.
Christmas is presentation?
So the reason why this is on the agenda, I received a phone call asking, since there's three new council members also to discuss, since that time of year is actually coming, believe it or not.
148 days. Somebody's keeping track.
Thank you, Manny.
Can you state your name and address for the record?
Sure. I'm Allison Dupree. My new address is sadly Pilgrim Avenue in Coventry. I just moved to Coventry from West Warwick, but that doesn't, will not deter us from working for Christmases. This is Manny Murray, who is also a-
Coventry resident?
Coventry resident. And coincidentally, our board president, Joe Gemma, is a retired West Warwick teacher and he is also not a West Warwick resident. But our roots are deep in West Warwick and this organization was started in 1979, 38 years ago. Many of you will remember the efforts of Tom Ioniti, the late Tom Ioniti, who really brought this organization to fruition. It started out as a weekend activity that lasted over the course of two or three days. And due to, quite frankly, the lack of volunteers and the lack of funds, we have cut back significantly in our fundraising efforts. But I'm glad to say that we're still able to service many families in the town. For those of you that aren't aware of Christmases, and I would also like to extend my congratulations to Mr. Lancelata and his organization, because being a part of a community organization is not easy. We're all vying for the same kind of volunteers, we're all vying for the same donations. So my hat's off to him for 40 years of doing that for our community. On a yearly basis, Christmases in the last few years has serviced over 450 families during Christmas and Thanksgiving. We provide food baskets, food vouchers, and Christmas toys for families. Last year, that resulted in Christmas toys for 900 children in the district. Those children are identified through the administrators at the elementary schools and the social workers in the school. And it's not limited to that, anyone can really just see Manny at the senior center and be interviewed and be registered for Christmases. In addition to giving the holiday toys to the children, there are a number of families, nine to 10 families that are adopted by Christmases and various community organizations and businesses. And they go on a shopping spree and they come back and they have a small dinner at the senior center. Last year, 20 families were adopted by various organizations that all fall under the OSBS of Christmas is. We're very lucky to be supported through the community, but there are some key players in the community that support us on a yearly basis. One being in most, very important, West Warwick School Department. Every school, elementary school, middle school, high school conducts food drives and toy drives and a dress down for Christmases. They raise in excess of $5,000 throughout the year. Various giving trees throughout the community also provide funds for us. Our biggest fundraiser quite actually is something that we don't even have to go out and do. The West Warwick firefighters have a boot drive for us. And last year, they raised $12,000 on that weekend. So we would not be able to do what we do without them. We have area businesses that set giving trees up, we have area businesses that donate to us on a daily, yearly basis. And this year, well, started last year, the students at the high school have really gotten involved. They actually come and they set, they help set the toys up and bring the toys upstairs. Because as you can imagine, nine toys for 900 children, that is a feat in and of itself. Enough cannot be said, actually, I'm speaking on behalf of the organization, but enough cannot be said for Manny Murray and Joe Gemma, who literally worked the entire year. Joe and Manny and the board has already secured over 100 donations for our next and biggest fundraiser of the year. Three or four years ago, we started a very small wine tasting at Royal Mills and it's blossomed into our biggest event. And this year, it will be held on Friday, October 27th, at Cranston Country Club.
We have tickets available. $20 a ticket.
Thirty, thirty. For $30, you get to taste wine and beer and have appetizers, knowing that every single cent that you donate is going to go to the children right here in the Town of West Warwick. We're always looking for more donations, we're always looking for more attendees for that event. We're thrilled that the council gave us the opportunity to come up and review what we do. And maybe this will, with the JCs here tonight and us here tonight, maybe this will spur the council, maybe once a month, to invite an organization from town up to let you know what they do and get the word out to the other people since you are streamed live now.
What was that date again?
October 27th, Cranston Country Club, from 7 to 10. Does anyone have any questions of Manny or how this runs through the town?
Actually ran into, we ran into each other when you were taking the kids out to Target last year, actually. I was driving around with the crazy Christmas wagon and they wanted to take a picture with it.
And like I said, there are so many organizations out there, we're not here to compete with any other organization. We know that Jay does a great job with his crazy Christmas wagon, we know that Be the Change, there's another Angels organization-
Secret Angels, I believe you have.
Right. But we just wanted to review with the newest council members what we do and why we do it. So we thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Thanks, Manny.
Petition for amendment to zoning map for a portion of the accessories, platform lot 212, Lamb Motors Company Incorporated.
I make a motion to waive the reading, it's like 10 pages.
I'll second.
Moved and second to waive the reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes, ayes.
No, I'll move the resolution.
I'll second.
Discussion. Who's here on behalf of Lamb Motors?
Excuse me.
Just state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Todd Hamula, my address 4556 Pimlico Circle, Medina, Ohio.
Basically, I know, I brought it up to the council before, Dollar General's looking to possibly move into that area location. Came before the planning board last month and now before us. On the map, I had a little more insight because I got all the plans from Mark Coro last month. I took a ride by, stopped by one of the residents' homes over there in the cul-de-sac on Flynn Terrace to explain what was actually gonna happen. Some of the concerns were, if you look here, and I'll pass this around, but here's Main Street, Dollar General, if everybody's familiar with the property on site of Lamb Motors in Clyde Towers. And I'll let you see it and I'll point it out a little better. If you look, some of the residents' concerns was this piece of property here, which does not affect the Dollar General, so this piece of property will still remain woodland. And also, there's, I want to say it's almost a 400-foot buffer between Flynn Terrace and Dollar General. So that will still remain wooded area. And those are some of the things I know myself and the planner talked about, because me as the Councilman of the Ward, I knew Flynn Terrace would be highly affected if they went all the way in the back here and cleared out all those woods. Without, no prevail, without any arguments or anything, Dollar General basically said they're gonna keep this piece of land the way it was. There was an issue with somebody's property as far as a shed though, correct? Or is that gonna be resolved?
There's an encroachment of a shed on the property, on Steve Lamb's property, that we're gonna allow it to remain as an encroachment. It's not, it's not causing any concern and issue, it'll just be a title exception of the closing.
I just, just to point out to the council, when it came before the planning board, they, all of this, they just covered, was covered in detail by the planning board. The planning board was totally satisfied and vital decision in favor of what's being requested tonight. And all of that was covered in great, great deal of detail.
So for the longest time, this piece of land was considered industrial, except for a small little portion, which was considered residential, am I correct?
Yes.
Which is right here?
Yes.
And that's what we would convert over to industrial. Speaking to Mr. Lamb, he actually thinks it's always been taxed industrial, but he never, he never had any issues. One thing I will say, I had a long conversation with Mr. Lamb about this property for a good three to four years now. And he's always been very conservative on what he wanted to go there to protect the neighbors. Because not only does he owns property here, but he also wanted to protect the neighbors on Flynn Terrace. It's usually the person just trying to sell the land and they don't care what happens to it. He was very caring on what happened with the neighbors in Flynn Terrace. And I know they're very concerned, I know they haven't seen this map, but I know I stopped by their neighbors' last, like, right after the last council meeting to bring it over. But if you'd like, I can come, I can show you this map in a few seconds and then you can understand a little better. And again, it's a new business, Dollar General, and it's gonna be on Main Street.
My recollection is that the couple of neighbors who did appear before the planning board, after the presentation, were satisfied with the-
I met, I actually came in late, so I met him on the sidewalk. And the concerns they had was this slot here, obviously this slot here, and making sure that, you know, they would still have some sort of buffer between Harris Avenue, Flynn Terrace, and-
There was explained to them that-
Excuse me, Celeste, will you speak into the microphone, please?
Anything to do with that lot would have to come back before planning and zoning.
And they were just concerned because some of them did not feel comfortable coming and speaking that night, so they just wanted, you know, I told them I would look into the matter. And I think we solved all matters on this.
So if I may speak real quick, the project was presented in front of the planning board. Real quick, real quick history, my company really wasn't interested in buying all the property. We only wanted just the front portion to develop the Dollar General. But Steve Lamb, he's not gonna sell just bits and pieces of this, plus that whole back piece would be landlocked from, from fronting on a right-of-way. So we're purchasing everything as really a lot of property that we don't need. So there is no intention to develop the back piece, it'll remain woodland, there's no lots split being proposed. We would not be against, and I think I talked about this with some of the neighbors, that if they wanted to approach us after the project's built and after it's up, maybe we could parcel some of that off, they could grow their parcels back there. We would definitely be amenable to that. You know, it's zoned residential, I'm sure they're probably using it and enjoying it today, so if they wanted to do that, but we have no intentions on growing that. We also did have a meeting today with Clyde Tower around 3 o'clock. We, it was a suggestion of the planning board and we went and we presented the project to them. I can report after the meeting, they're very, very excited about the project. Can't wait for it to come. It's right next door, big convenience. In fact, there was an individual coming in from the, when I was leaving, he bringing his groceries from wherever, you could tell he was walking for a long way and everything was warm. So this would be right next door. Dollar General is similar to, I think, a project that's constructing down the street, Family Dollar. Let me explain a couple of the differences. The building's a little larger, they sell more food products in the building, it's not a dollar store. Family Dollar purchased a company called Dollar Tree not too long ago. They do have two different, I mean, it's two different concepts, so that store's not gonna be a dollar store. But the main difference between the two users are that there's about 70, 75% of this building is gonna be devoted to food product, which I know that that will be a big, a big deal to the neighbors, the neighborhood, not just Clyde Tower, but also to all the residents that are, that are surrounding. My company builds Dollar Generals in a lot of different markets. We've built a lot of different markets here in Rhode Island, Coventry, Cranston, North Providence. And this is a market that they've been studying for the better part of a year, that they want to be here. They're willing, they're looking to invest about a million and a half dollars in West Warwick at this particular site through the land purchase, through construction costs, and through the operating of the business. They'll hire local, so you'll know that residents of the area of West Warwick will work this store, a manager, assistant manager, handful of part-time employees. We, my company will actually own the site, they will be our tenants. We will actually hire a general contractor, but sub-trades will come from this area. So this would be a big benefit, this development would be a big benefit, I know, to this area of West Warwick. Tonight, the rezoning and the master plan petition is in front of you to support, just to rezone a small portion of the R8 residential to be business. That's all that we're asking for, so that then we can site plan as we're, as we're displaying in front of you tonight. And I believe the aerial that you have was, is the same aerial that's up there on the board. So that's a rendition of our site plan. I'm here for any questions you may have about, about the project.
So I do have a couple of questions. As far as the raw land behind the store itself, would, one of two things, would Dollar General or property owner be willing to maybe parcel that property out to some of the landowners?
He just said that, he would.
I was out in the hall, I'm sorry.
Oh, absolutely. We, yeah, we actually did not want to buy all of it, but actually it comes together as one whole. Steve Lamb is saying, no, he's not taking something that's gonna be landlocked, so we're- Steve Lamb is saying, no, he's not taking something that's going to be landlocked, so we're buying everything. We would not be against that. In fact, what I'm, what I'm kind of thinking is that after the project's approved, we're under construction, maybe that'd be the appropriate time to maybe start talking, working with landowners, if they would like to parcel some of this off to grow their existing lots.
Or, or would you put a contingency in there that it would never be developed?
That the back property would never be, well, I mean, we.
Because one of the concerns that we have here is this property is privately owned here. And if Dollar General decides they want to sell this to this person, then it could be one giant development in there and affect Flynn Terrace.
Sure, sure. But. We, we have no interest in the residual property, so if the town council desires to put some sort of condition of approval to restrict further development back there, we, we would, I would not be objectional to that.
So what I, what I would suggest from here, I, I support this. What I would suggest from here is possibly meet with the residents. We can set up a meeting maybe here that, you know, if, if you decide you want to give parcels to the residents or however you want to do it, or put a stipulation that it can't be developed and we'll let them decide and you guys can decide altogether. Does that sound fair at a later date?
Yeah, the only, the only thing I would say is I'm, I don't, I, I, I do not want to go through the exercise of splitting and redrafting deeds and all that. There, I mean, that's quite a process, very costly process. If they're interested and they would like to approach me or my company for the property, by all means, we're more than willing to work with them.
Okay.
I think, I think the suggestion should be in the council, that the council's going to approve this subject to the agreement that the condition is that it's not going to be any further development, correct?
Yes.
That's what you would, that's what you would, that's what would be put into the record, that would also be put into the deeds, that there would be no further development for that back lot. Now, if there's going to be a problem with that, or.
Just, my name's Timothy Kane. I represent Zeremba. I think you might want to limit it to commercial, just because the neighbors might want to put a pool back there or a garage or something like that.
Right, but the whole point is the zone change is going to allow for a residential property to become.
Correct.
Commercial.
Correct.
So, it's not going to go any further than what you're developing right now. But since you're going to own that additional property, there'd be no further development at all. Commercial or, I mean, residential would be fine if other people, if, if the budding neighbors were going to buy it, absolutely. But the condition for the zoning change would be that there'd be no further commercial development or any development by Zeremba or, I want to make sure I've got the right Dollar, Dollar General?
Dollar General, correct.
Dollar General.
And my client is perfectly agreeable with that restriction.
Yeah, in fact.
If I understood things, it sounds like maybe the residents were concerned about having any residential project back there. But certainly if it, certainly nothing commercial.
Some of the properties, some of the properties that have bought, right on the edge of the cul-de-sac in the house, when you get to the edge of the cul-de-sac at the end, and then right around that little corner, and it actually goes all the way back to three or four houses back there. So that's what they were concerned with, was housing, because they, they have a lot of water issues sometimes in that neighborhood, just trying to drop the back lot off of Flynn Terrace. So, that's what they're more concerned about, is flooding issues or anything like that. And if they kept their raw land, they wouldn't have to worry about it as much.
They're protected by the current zoning from, from commercial happening right now without it coming back in front of you. But I'm not objectional to limiting that future development back there.
Does anybody from Flynn Terrace want to have anything to say, or are you satisfied? If you have anything to say, come up to the mic, just state your name and address for the record. Don't be nervous. Just come on up, I, I have to come up to the mic and state your name and address for the record. Just state your concerns and we can work through it tonight.
Our concerns is. That's our backyard.
Just state, state your name.
My name is Joyce Thornton. I live on nineteen Flynn Terrace, which this is right in my backyard. So, all right, the buffer's there. Until somebody decides to sell it and then, you know, what happens?
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, when we were out in the hallway.
Yeah.
He did state that he would either sub the parcel out to the neighborhood, that if you guys are interested in it, or they have no further, want no further development on the property themselves. So we can, we can put a stipulation in, that's why I was saying we should have a meeting with the neighbors. If you decide you want to, say, purchase the land or do whatever, and I understand they don't want to pay for deeds and, and, and recording of them deeds, it gets very expensive. So it'd be a cost probably to the residents, whoever wants the piece of property. They don't want to incur the cost of it. But we could also, if, if you don't want to purchase the property, and we could protect you by saying there could be no further development without coming to the town council or whatever it may be. So I think they're willing to work with us and you as, as a community, so. Whatever, we can, we can like schedule that meeting at a later date. They just, one, this is one of the stipulations and concerns, this is how they want to get the project moving forward. Once we approve this tonight, and they go, they, they don't have to go before zoning, correct?
They go back before the planning board.
Back before the planning board, which will be next month, and then they can start their project.
Okay.
Does that sound fair?
It sounds fair.
Yeah, we can also open space.
Keep that just the way it is.
We, we have, we have a few different ideas and we can work with the business owner on that.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Concerns? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Minutes of the previous meeting resolved that the minutes of the July eleventh, two thousand seventeen special meeting and town council meeting and the July eighteenth, two thousand seventeen executive session are hereby accepted.
Move the resolution.
Second the resolution.
Move and second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Hold on one second, Mary Ann Jett.
Under section forty-two dash forty-six dash four, forty-two dash forty-six dash five, eight, four, seven of Rhode Island general laws, the council will close the executive session minutes from. From July.
Twenty-eight?
Twenty.
Twenty-seven.
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 Twenty-seventh.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. And just for the record, I think I said, this was July eleventh meeting, when I opened up the minutes. This is August first. It's been a long ride for me, just like, you know.
I didn't hear that part.
I wish it was July eleventh. Get another month.
Consent agenda license applications resolved that the consent agenda, having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed of or awaiting recommendation, the same is hereby approved.
Move the resolution.
Second the resolution.
Move and second, discussion. The chief actually brought a couple of things to my attention. One, I had a resident call me today to talk about Labor Day weekend at the Holy Ghost. The only request they're asking, I spoke to Dominic already, was a second dumpster for that one week, just so they don't have overflow of food in whatever bags outside. Dominic has agreed to that. The fireworks license. I know they had a meeting about this a couple of weeks ago. This is going to be the first time in a long time that they're going to have fireworks on Labor Day again. The question is, on behalf of the police department, they don't have any information on where it's going to be, where, where the fireworks are going to be lit up. And also, the night parade, they haven't gotten any information on. So, even though we approve this tonight, they still have to work very closely with the police department to make sure what's going on. Police detail for the night parade.
Of course.
I know a few years ago, they did it and they had no detail and that became a nightmare at nine o'clock at night, so. Just want to make sure that whoever's working on this, to make sure they contact the police department. What we usually do every year is have a meeting, the Holy Ghost and all parties involved. We usually have a meeting with the police chief and a major, and we usually go through Angelo and myself, because it's usually both our wards. We usually sit down, discuss everything, how we like, you know, how things are going to go, how the parade route's going to be. So, just make sure we schedule that meeting this year, Dominic, and, and any, any clubs, other clubs that are involved, like the PASC and the PACC, to at least have them a representation from their club. So that way there, we can all be on the same page and that night, nobody, that day and night, nobody's running around with their head cut off. Any other questions on the licenses? Any public comment on licenses? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Those have been approved. The carnival permit, Portuguese Holy Ghost. Balloons and novelties permit, Portuguese Holy Ghost. Parade permit, Portuguese Holy Ghost. Fireworks license, Portuguese Citizens Club. Tag day license. Raffle permit, Kimberly Culbertson. Tag day permit, same person. West Warwick Civic Center Flea Market, Laurie Swanson. West Warwick Civic Center. Class F victual permit. Sunday and holiday license for Fishbowl. Hudson Dry Cleaners. FX Studio for new business. Sunday, Sunday and holiday, Belize Subaru. Belize Volkswagen. Mechanical amusement device licenses and all business licenses that have been on today's agenda have been approved. That's a lot of licenses. Thank you.
Consent agendas correspondence resolved that the consent agenda, having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed or awaiting recommendation, the same is hereby approved.
Move the resolution.
Second the resolution.
Move and second, discussion. We've got two different requests, three requests. One, first, let me read this one.
What are we on? Consent, correspondence?
Correspondence. We got a letter from, and I'd just like to read this out loud. I'm writing as a property owner of fifty-one, fifty-three Prospect Hill Ave to inform you of the work performed by several members of the Department of Public Works. A storm drain on McTear's Court had, had been blocked or had collapsed. I sent a letter to council members some time ago advising rainwater was flooding the street, backyard, enter in my basement. A crew from the West Warwick Department of Public Works worked very hard in an attempt to correct the problem with the old drain, but was not able to do so. The same crew whose name they don't have then installed a new drain lining tying into a larger line. This crew worked very hard in a professional diligent manner and to handle this project and complete this project. I have the highest respect for them. In this day and age, when there's so much criticism of public employees, this work crew represents the best in workers of the town of West Warwick. Please give them the regards and to my council member who assisted in having this work completed. Angelo says CC to you, so you've got to try to do this.
I got the letter.
Good job to DPW, so I don't think anybody's here from DPW tonight.
No, that was a lot.
They heard there was going to be some nice comments about him, so they didn't want to hear it.
So if we could just make sure, Mark, that they get recognized down there.
I also have one, councilman. I received it today from resident Jane Worrell at seventeen Blossom Street. May I read that one? Says, "Dear Mr. Krulow, I would just like to thank the DPW road crew for fixing a road and drainage problem I was having. The crew was wonderful and I no longer have any flood in my yard. Sincerely, Jane Worrell." So, kudos to the DPW department, and you're right, they don't.
They're not even going to believe this. Dave's not going to believe this at all.
When they don't show up, that's because Dave Lombare is on vacation.
Also, we have two requests. West Warwick Veterans Council, which is a yearly request, they're looking for their contribution of fifteen hundred dollars. And the Portuguese Social Club is also looking for a donation of any kind. And later on in the agenda, we can talk more about that. Any public comment? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Amplifier loudspeaker dance live band license. Portuguese American citizens, resolve that the town council hereby approves the following application. Portuguese American citizens, club, attention, Adarito Santos. Date, September first, second, and third, two thousand seventeen. Location, ninety-seven East Main Street, time, eight P M to midnight.
Move the resolution.
Second the resolution.
Move and second. Any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. That one's been approved.
Portuguese American sports club. John, attention, John Ribero. Dates, September first, second, third, and fourth, two thousand seventeen. Time, six P M. And I have a note here that they're requesting it be ended at nine thirty instead of midnight. Did you get that note?
No.
Let me get that to you. That just came, I think, today. Paula gave it to me today. Six P M to midnight, it says here, they want, only want to go to nine thirty. Location, twelve Bridge Street.
I'll move the resolution. As amended to nine thirty.
I'll second the resolution.
Who signed this? I can't.
Ribero, Danny.
No, I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, even if you, even if you approve it to midnight, what they put in, they close at nine thirty, that's their business.
No, no, this person, this person took the letter, mailed it back to him.
Thank you.
And put, "We have people working for weekends. Can this event end at nine thirty P M? Sorry, cannot attend the meeting, twenty-two Bridge Street." And it just has a. Yeah, so what I'm saying, I was confused with, when you're reading the letter, it says sincerely, Mary Ann Kelly. I'm like, would you write it against them? But no, on the side, there's a letter from the resident over there. But they're not able to attend the meeting. We, we honestly have had it every year until midnight. And I, I just don't know how you can approve every other club to go till midnight and then one at nine thirty. You just, you know, it's.
Once a year.
These clubs, actually, this is their biggest time of the year for them. It's, this is a tradition that they're trying to keep going here in West Warwick. And, you know, if, and even the residents, when I first got elected, I remember in two thousand six, you know, the Holy Ghost and Knight Street used to sit here and, and be very vocal against the Holy Ghost. But working with them and the residents in the Holy Ghost, you know, they seem to resolve most of their problems and the residents have worked well with each other to, to do so. So I, I, I mean, I hate to say no to one and yes to the others. It's, it's one or all, you know, it's kind of that type of situation.
But how many complaints have you gotten?
I, I've never gotten any.
Is the chief here? Chief?
Just come up to the mic, chief. And I know we got some people here from that club specifically.
Have you gotten complaints last year on it?
I'd have to research the computer. I mean, we've gotten them in the past. I don't recall any last year. And now and then with the music, late at night, we might get one or two calls, but.
Sorry, microphone?
Thanks, chief.
Just state your name and address for the record.
John Ribero, used to be West Warwick resident. I live in Warwick now, seventeen Island Street. I don't think, we, last year we were very quiet. We're just trying to do some stuff outside. Mostly it's going to be like, just DJ music. Not to, I mean, I think all the neighbors, compared to the other clubs, we're probably the quietest. We haven't had really any run-ins in the police since. I've been, yeah, treasurer, so I just want to speak to that.
Yeah, I mean, we, we did in the past with the subway and the other, we give out the phone number, right, if there's an issue to contact them directly, isn't that the easiest way?
Yeah, we can, we can do that. Do you mind contacting the person at twenty-two Bridge Street and talking to them and say, you know, here's our number if you have any issues?
Yeah.
For that weekend?
I can do that.
Okay. Any other comment? I'll give you this number in a few minutes.
Dave, give me that back.
Which one?
Paper I gave you to Mary Ann.
Oh, let me just get this phone number. No other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Resolve that the town council hereby approves the following application. Crompton Vets, attention, Ed Furtado. August fifth, two thousand seventeen, time, eleven A M to eleven P M. Location, thirty-seven Hepburn Street.
Move the resolution.
Second the resolution.
Move and second. Any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Resolve that the town council hereby approves the following application. Portuguese Holy Ghost. Dominic Lake. September one, two, three, and four, two thousand seventeen. Location, eleven Ventura Street, time, seven P M to midnight.
Move the resolution.
Second the resolution.
Move and second. Any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Amplifier loudspeaker license and theatrical performances, shows and exhibitions licenses. Resolve that the town council hereby approves the following application. Kimberly Culbertson, date, August sixth, two thousand seventeen. Location, sixty-six Earl Street, time, two P M to eleven. two thousand seventeen, location sixty-six Earl Street, time two P M. to eleven P M.
Move the resolution.
Second the resolution.
Moving second. Any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Additions and cancellations resolved that the attached additions in the amount of four thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars and ninety-two cents and cancellations in the amount of six thousand seven hundred ninety-eight dollars and forty-two cents presented to the tax assessor for approval of the town council in accordance with Article twenty-five, section five of the West Warwick Code of Ordinances is hereby approved. The original list is on file in the office of the tax assessor.
I'll move the resolution.
Second the resolution.
Moving second. Discussion?
Yeah, just one thing, Dave. I wanna, somebody asked a question, oh, yeah, right here, where the exemptions were asked to be removed. And there's only a couple of reasons why the person would ask for the exemptions to be removed if an elderly parent died and it went in their name or something. Do you, is, does Ann, no, or Am, or Rose know why they asked?
Can't yell from the back.
It's just a question from a constituent asking why he asked for the exemption to be.
Yeah, I don't know why I only do the abatement for the tax assessor, but it had to be for something like an elderly person who is not living there anymore.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And now they're paying more.
Yeah.
So.
No, they wanted to know why they lost the exemption and there's only.
No, they didn't loo-, they didn't lose it. They requested to have the exemption.
Taken off.
Taken off.
Right. At their request.
Right. But I don't know why. I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. Thank you.
They may not be living here or something.
If, if you remember, just give me a buzz tomorrow so I can get back to them and let them know why. I, I mean.
I'll, I'll ask Ann in the morning.
I guess curiosity killed the cat, but we'll get the curiosity out of it.
Very good.
Thanks, Rose.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Cancellation of taxes resolved that the attached cancellations in the amount of two thousand six hundred fifty-two dollars and twenty-six cents presented to the tax collector for approval of the town, of the town council in accordance with Article twenty-five, section five of the West Warwick Code of Ordinances is hereby approved. The original list is on file and the tax collector's.
Move the resolution.
Second the resolution.
Moving second. Any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Police vehicle fleet upgrading unmarked vehicles and fleet resolved that the town council hereby approves the police department's request pertaining to the police vehicle fleet to purchase three vehicles for the S I U Detective Division will be funded from the federal and state asset forfeitures and that, the total cost vehicles and equipment will not exceed seventy thousand dollars.
Move the resolution.
Second the resolution.
Moving second. Chief?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank you for, uh, the kind words about, uh, Roland Kuto earlier. Obviously, a great loss to our police department. He was a great police officer, great human being and a very good friend. So if you recall, um, during budget session, when we were going over the capital improvement, we had some cuts in our police, um, requests for police vehicles. And we'd had a ten-year plan where we had, trying to implement three to four new vehicles a year into the fleet. As I said during that meeting, I believe I said we were about seventy, seventy-five percent up to par in the patrol division, but we were suffering in our detective division. And as of this year, we lost three, um, unmarked vehicles as well as possible, one other vehicle due to, you know, just unserviceable, not worth putting the money into them. So with that being said, we have, um, a state and a federal seizure, uh, asset seizure forfeitures that we receive. We have a detective working with the state task force and one with the federal task force. And we're fortunate enough in the last few months to receive quite a bit of money from seizures. That money does have to be laid out in certain areas. We can't just use it for anything. We wish to do so. One being, we can buy cars that will be in the detective S I U division. So this will, it's a win-win for the police department as well as the town. Um, it will, hopefully, I anticipate it not having to spend the capital money that was allotted to me because of that reason, I can use more of my, um, grant money that we received to go towards the patrol vehicles as opposed to going towards those vehicles. And it also, hopefully, that'll allocate money at the end of the year, maybe to be placed somewhere else by the town council. With that being said, with these three new vehicles as well, hopefully, it will lighten next year's eighteen, nineteen's, um, requests for new vehicles.
Good job, John.
Yeah, excellent.
Any questions for the chief?
Again, this, this doesn't come out of the taxpayers' money. This is drug money that was forfeited. As the chief explained it to me last week, and the money that we did allocate for him to buy, that's gonna be put back in for something else. So it worked out great. And chief, thanks for your diligence and working hard at that and your cooperation and it really means a lot.
Thank you, chief. Bert, if you could come up to the mic.
Bert, we didn't have your seat reserved for you tonight? Well, they gotta know that that's a town sergeant's seat.
Bert Malahan, Monterey Drive. Miss President, I, I would hope the chief, when he's looking for cars, would consider, uh, an electric car, get at least one electric car in there. I've tested the Volt and that sucker will get out and go faster than a V eight, believe me. And there's no maintenance, no engine.
Yeah, Bert, I gotta disagree with you, my friend.
A lot of battery maintenance.
That battery.
No, a hundred, uh, the battery's good for a hundred thousand miles.
Well, with the police, with them running it and doing it, that's like four months.
Well, if, if they only bought one, just try one.
We have one.
Oh, we do?
We have an electric car. We bought that car. When did we get that?
We didn't buy it yet. It was in the budget.
No, but the electric car that we purchased through a federal grant, what was that, four, five years ago, four years ago?
Didn't we ever get it?
We have it.
Fred, Fred took it when he left to West Virginia.
I know he purchased a golf cart.
Anyways, I hope the chief would, would, would look into an electric car, cause that Bolt is.
We're gonna go back to Hus and Buggy.
Thank you, Bert. Any other comment? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
FY two thousand sixteen AFG Grant E M W two thousand sixteen F V zero zero nine one six. Result that the town, oh, um, I forgot to say, sponsored by Councilman Padula. Result that the town council hereby approves the D H S FY two thousand sixteen Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program in the amount of three hundred and seventy-one thousand six hundred dollars for the cost share by the town of thirty-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars. The town's cost share amount is in the fire department's rescue revenue account. Requesting permission to accept this grant and use the funds to purchase one fire pumper and related equipment as part of the department's capital improvement plan.
Uh, the chief said, the chief's out camping with his grandkids. I'll move the resolution.
Second the resolution.
Moving second. Uh, Angelo?
And the chief, I guess he told Mark about it. I mean, this is a, a, yeah, a grant.
So, so, so I can fill you in a little bit. This is a FEMA grant, uh, firefighters program. Uh, the town is receiving a total of three hundred and thirty-seven, eight hundred and nineteen thousand dollars for an engine and equipment towards the engine. Approximate cost of a new engine with equipment is a little over four hundred and fifty thousand, it's four fifty-one, eight fifty. So the, the cost to the town would be a hundred and fourteen thousand thirty-one dollars. So there's a substantial savings to the town. This was something, the engine was something that was in their capital improvement program. Um, and you'll recall that the council initiated, I believe it was last year, a portion of the rescue funds to be used for lease purchase for new apparatus and rescue vehicles for the fire department. So this is going to realize the savings to that account of the total amount of three thirty-seven, eight one nine. The count currently has five hundred and five thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars in it. So there's a substantial savings to the account and then that money that will be left in the account and added to the account will continue to go towards lease purchase of new apparatus in a revolving program similar to the police department.
So can I get some clarification? Is it one fourteen or thirty-three thousand?
Yeah, we have, we have different numbers.
So, so, yeah, no, so, so, just so we understand what that is, right? So they applied for a grant. FEMA authorized the grant to a purchase of a vehicle of three hundred and seventy-one thousand six. The matching funds to that is ten percent. So that's that thirty-three thousand dollar number. However, the, the apparatus and equipment, the cost is four hundred and fifty-one. So we're going to exceed the match. We have to exceed the match in order to purchase the apparatus, cause the cost is more than was authorized by FEMA. So the actual match is a hundred and fourteen zero three one.
So I, I, excellent money, three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. I just wanna know where the hundred and fourteen's are coming from.
The hundred and fourteen's coming out of that rescue reserve account. That number was going to be.
Just for that.
That number was going to be four fifty-one coming out of the account. Now it's gonna be one fourteen. The amount of the account is five hundred and five, two thirty-one.
Okay. So that will be reduced by a hundred and fourteen. I just wanna clarify, and also just to clarify, all rescue runs and, um, any, any collections that are, uh, collected dur-, during rescue runs from insurance company, a percentage of that money goes in a designated account to, at one time, it was just for new ambulances. Now the council changed that about two years ago and that is now for any fire vehicle. So all money that is generated for the fi-, fire rescues, which we have two, is put into that account and that account is used strictly for, um, new, uh, new, new vehicles for the fire department, not just to, uh, ambulances. So that's where that money will be coming from. Chief? Oh, okay. Any other discussion on that?
Dodge the door.
Full speed. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Ordinance two thousand seventeen dash twenty, second reading, sponsored by Council President Goslin. An ordinance amending section four dash twenty-one dot one intact cats and twelve, that, five dash two, dogs prohibited in public park or recreation areas of the town, of the Code of Ordinances of the town of West Warwick.
I'll move the ordinance. Second.
Moving second. Discussion. I think that gentleman was here for this matter, so.
Yeah, I would imagine.
But Al, if you wanna come up to the mic, um, I just wanna clarify, cause a lot of people got some bad information on the internet, never happens.
I do not believe that.
This excludes, um.
Service dogs and.
And compassion.
No.
What is it?
Yeah, service, uh, service dogs.
Excludes those two types of pets. And it doesn't have to be a dog. It could be a cat, too. It could be anything.
Okay, I wrote it. Yeah, service dogs and I can't think of the other word.
Therapy?
Therapy dogs.
Therapy dogs. Al and I had this conversation over the weekend while I was watching some softball games in, uh, Maryland. That was one thing that I wanted to confirm. I didn't have my, I didn't have my laptop with me. But those two dogs are excluded from this ordinance.
The, the, for the council.
Allowed in the parks for those needs.
Yeah, for the council's background, when, when we were changing this, it said, uh, uh, si-, seeing eye dogs. I was gonna put in service dogs and the reason therapy dogs came in, I wasn't aware of it. My granddaughter was, is living in an apartment. No pets. My granddaughter's a sneak. She went to some therapist at college and they wrote a letter to her that she can have a therapy cat. So my granddaughter's got a therapy cat. So I don't know the point of someone saying that therapy dogs are only, or therapy animals are only interior. They're not. That stupid cat goes everywhere Samantha goes. And, uh. That's what I feel about that cat.
That's the cat's name. He didn't tell you that was the cat's name?
He feels about cats the way that John Dimico feels about roosters.
So that, so that's, that's the background to it. And all we did was we were trying to make it as broad for people who need assistance as we can. You know, that was it.
Is that gentleman coming back? I kinda figured that. John, you might have to help that gentleman with the microphone. Actually, I'll just let him yell from where.
I, I planned to, um, you know, I can't bring it over to him, but we can all. He's coming now.
How much wireless mics cost to get, I know we talked about that, right?
Air conditioner's on.
Some days, some days it's like zero degrees.
That's a manual air conditioner. See what interim town manager means, window openers. Jack of all trades, Mark.
Jack.
I won't answer that. Oh, God.
How's he gonna do that?
Huh?
How's he gonna do?
Are you kidding me? You never bring your.
Sorry, I think you're here for the ordinance that we were passing about, um, no dogs or cats or whatever allowed into, uh, public parks. I just wanted to, I know you had to step outside with your dog. It excludes service dogs and.
We have a.
Therapy.
Therapy dogs. So just want, just wanna clarify that. I think that's what you're here to speak.
I understand that, but I'd like to see some type of dog park areas outside for dogs.
Yep.
Because there are a lot of people with dogs and they are taxpayers.
One thing that we, we talked about about three years ago was a dog park and we actually looked at River Point Park as one of them. Um, our trust, our insurance company, were strongly against it. Um, we do have to look at funding it also, but, uh, our insurance rates would drastically be affected by that. And, you know, when we wrote them a letter asking them what they, our former town manager asked them specifically about putting a dog park in, they were strongly against it. And they're actually pushing other communities, that the trust is actually pushing other communities to either.
Eliminate them.
Eliminate them or, uh, their rates will drastically go up. So that's one thing we have to take in consideration when it comes time, especially if there's no financing and plus no money in the budget for it. So, but we will take that under advisement. Thank you.
I have something else I want to.
Later on, okay, thank you. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I gotta take a roll call vote. I'm sorry, it's an ordinance. Jay?
Yes.
Angelo?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Ordinance two thousand seventeen dash twenty-one, second reading, sponsored by President Goslin, Councilman Padula, Councilman Lichardi, an ordinance amending appendix C traffic ordinance of the Code of Ordinances for the town of West Warwick. Want me to read the whole thing?
No, I waive the reading. Second.
Uh, motion to waive the reading, second. All in favor to waive the reading?
Aye.
I'll move the, uh, ordinance.
I'll second.
Moving second. Al?
We've been charging for dog and cat licenses and somehow or other it never made.
No, it's traffic.
Oh.
Vincenzo, Batez, Old Carriage Road.
Recommended by the traffic committee.
Yes.
Well, the, what happened on Vincenzo Drive and Harding is it was written different. They had the wrong, they had a harder in Vigen-, Vincenzo instead of Harding and Vincenzo. So that's why my ward came on here. It was a mistake or we.
Yeah, there, there, there is another ordinance already on the books that I sent you a copy of regarding that.
Are we removing order in Vincenzo?
No, that's still there. There's an ordinance on the books.
I'm saying, are we, not we.
No.
All right, so that's.
That's, that's still sitting there.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, that's worthless. I mean, there's, it's just a round.
That's what I'm asking. Are they keeping the stop sign?
No, they're supposed to, the last conversation.
They can't.
Can't just remove it, cause it's an ordinance.
Can't just remove it.
We gotta, we gotta rescind that ordinance.
Yeah, we'll rescind it, so if anybody gets stopped going through that one, which is.
You want, you want an ordinance then to rescind the other Vincenzo order. I'll talk to Major Nott on it.
See what we do on that one. Now, what reading is this, Dave?
This is the second reading, also second. And again, Batez Street, even though there's already a stop sign put up under emergency circumstances, uh, car's just driving out of Batez right onto Phoenix Avenue, uh, without stopping. So they put that up immediately.
You know, I still remember that being a stop sign from when I was a kid.
Something, they didn't, they put it up just because there was no ordinance in place, so we had to do it correctly. You know, back in the day, we just put stop signs up, just because, you know, so. It was before our time.
In an old carriage road, it's, uh, it's a visi-, visibility issue. Major Nott looked into it with the traffic committee, so.
We just gotta approve the second reading, that's all.
Any other discussion on that? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Jason?
Yes.
Angelo?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Discussion action, Labor Day judges for the light parade sponsored by President Goslin.
Okay, so, um, I received, uh, actually, a message and talked to Angel Santos about, uh, they would like that the, the light parade. the, the light parade. They're, they're trying to get a lot more, uh, interest in that. So they'd like the town council to actually be judges for the night parade, to pick the best float. I said, I don't know how many of us, I, I don't know if I will be here this year, this will be the first time in forty-four years. I may miss Labor Day in West Warwick, but, um...
What's the date on that, Labor Day?
It's, uh, Sunday night, correct? Yes, Sunday night, September third.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I don't have a problem, where would we meet?
Um, you just wanna come up and give some information on that?
Hi, um, so they put in...
Just state your name and address for the record.
Angel Santos, Thirteenth Potter Ave, West Warwick. Um, as the, all the clubs have gotten together, we've made a decision that we do wanna have the light parade go through the grounds and have it judged this year. Um, we're gonna do judges float, uh, judges award and, um, people's choice. Um, probably meet, I mean, anywhere, but as long as you can get down there by, I'll say, I think they're trying to plan for it to start going off around eight, combined with the fireworks type of thing, so probably down there by eight-thirty, quarter of nine, by the time everybody gets together and the parade starts going down there. But when we have, um, the meeting with the chief, um, we can get everything to...
Yeah, just...
Together and get a final time on that.
Make sure the council gets an email to know what time that it's starting, what time we should be there, and where we, where we're all gonna meet.
Yes.
I'll get on that.
We'll do that, but yeah, I'm pretty sure that they wanna have everybody down at the grounds altogether, all the floats by like nine o'clock the latest, by the time the parade ends, so...
Yeah, just...
We'll get everything together, finalize a few things.
Send it to Mary Ann, Mary Ann will send it to the council and we'll be set.
Okay, will do.
You're thinking between eight-thirty and nine, though, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, the, the light parade usually kicks off...
Jason, you go to bed at eight o'clock.
Also, still trying to figure out the firework time, depending on what time the sun sets and everything like that, so... Trying to coordinate everything all at the same time.
Yeah, the light parade usually, usually starts around eight-thirty.
Yeah.
So, and it goes, it goes about thirty-five, forty-five minutes.
Yeah.
And then fireworks follow, probably.
And then depending on how many floats we have, I mean, we had a lot of people...
No, it's gonna take off from the Holy Ghost?
No, we meet down at like Horgan, at the corner of Citizens and Horgan. Um, line up that way, it's just one straight shot. We go up around one time, past Bridge Street, down, right down to Holy Ghost.
That's where it ends?
Mm-hmm.
This year, they just wanna pull into the Holy Ghost, stop there, and that's when the judging will take place, and then they disperse from there.
Mm-hmm.
So we would probably be down on the grounds.
On the grounds.
Yeah, we up top where the hall is, that landing.
Okay.
Set you up nice, nice.
Great idea.
Cause it wasn't bad.
Be honored to be a...
Yeah. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Angel.
Thank you.
Here we go.
Utility poles and road repairs sponsored by President Goslin and Councilman Padula.
Um, Angel, go ahead, you can start first, 'cause I, you're, you're just...
I'll tell ya...
Jay, you can speak on this, 'cause it's affecting the award.
This is going on two years, and I'm sure you guys are sick of hearing me, between Wakefield Street, River Street, now we got Park Street. The same contractor, I'm getting all kinds of different stories. Um, matter of fact, I called the manager and let him direct the, uh, the town that there are no more road opening permits until the contractor Britto finishes what he has already. Uh, it's unexcusable, unacceptable. Uh, this is the worst contractor that, and I've talked to Boyer, I've talked to, um, numerous people, Carty, Britto you just can't talk to. Uh, you know, it's the water company, it's nothing to do with the town council, well, you're wrong, because there will be no more road opening permits given in Ward One anyway, and that's for the rest of the wards. I know you guys are gonna go through the same thing. What, they, not only did they make River Street worse, they ground it all down, you got manhole covers sticking up, seven inches, thousands of dollars are lost, they, they could've built the Taj Mahal. By the time they did, a hundred yards? That is sixteen thousand cars a day going through there, thirty-seven businesses down the industrial park where I am. They'll close the road, I had to go tell them to open up the road because businesses were losing thousands of dollars. There's damage done, they're refusing to pay. I myself, uh, am going my way with it. Uh, I'm going a legal way with it, because it's just not gonna happen. So there's dozens of people that put in claims that are getting refused, and they're going through the proper channels like we were told to do, notify Kent County, send them a bill, get your claim. Um, I don't know what else to do. Uh, I know what I would do if it was our contractor that worked for us, he'd immediately be off the job permanently. Uh, but our hands are sorta tied. Um, but now that they can't open any more roads in Ward One, they're working on, on, uh, Tillencast Avenue near the Dunkin' Donuts, and they're making a mess there. I mean, two years on River Street, two years. So what's your suggestion? What, what else can we do?
Well, I could tell you that, um, I happened to drop my daughter off on Riviera Ave the other night at a birthday party, and, uh...
It's awful.
That's suicide ill, man, that's...
We all got the same problem.
It's, it's one of the worst roads in town. Ward Four, Ward Four, if anybody should, he should be a little bit more upset, because he's got every side road going all the way down, and that's where I blew out my tire, it was right on one-seventeen, because of, I, I trucked with three thousand miles on it.
It's an absolute mess, it, between Riviera Ave and Tampa Street, it's, you know, and all the streets in between. And I have people calling me, I have people emailing me.
Constantly.
And, and it's almost like we're held powerless, where, and I understand what they're saying, I'm, I'm in the ward all the time, and it's, it seems like we're continuously giving these people excuses. We know it's bad, it's going to be done, we're on the last phase.
Yeah.
But their question is when, and I don't blame them at all.
Two years.
And, and now, it's, it's August. So, we just said a hundred and something days...
Nine, ninety days.
Until Christmas, yeah.
Now you're gonna be into November, and then the roads are gonna be all done.
Then it stops, and then we're going to the same situation for next spring. And there's gonna be, there's gonna be excuses again about the weather and the water and all that, and, um, I think it's pretty simple, we're in the last phase, just do it. And it seems like, I don't know who's dropped the ball, but...
You're hearing all excuses, Jason.
There has to be some miscommunication somewhere.
One contractor's not paying the other contractor.
One at a time.
We have Boyle and Fogarty in Ward Four, last I knew. Um, first they're there, then they're not. Um, I just think we need to have a point person, if we don't have that, we need to have that, from the town, who's giving the right information, and needs to put the heat on these companies.
Well, we have two representatives, we have two representatives on the Kent County Water Authority.
And, and they said their hands are tied.
Well, that's Bob Boyer and Frank Giorgio, and, and both of them report to this council as far as our representation on that board. So if they're not giving us answers, and we just, we just reappointed Bob Boyer, I mean, we, we definitely need them to represent us, and they need to get on them. I mean, they can say no more road opening, uh, until everything's resolved.
We give the road openings, not them.
Yeah, but they could, they could tell...
They're not authorizing anymore.
They could stop authorizing and tell all these contractors and these companies that are working for them, we can't do anymore until we get, or at least show some progress. I mean, Angelo's right, that, that's a, his ward over there, River Street, I, I watched, I watched a lowrider go through it, uh, was it last week, and they didn't realize the road was being torn up before they decided to stop at thirty miles an hour and come through there, and they, I think they tore an oil pan, because there was some fluid leaking out after he hit it.
Um... It's unacceptable.
You know, the one-seventeen, you know, they're, they're leaving equipment, I, I hit a piece of the back hall, the, the pad to the back hall.
It's a disaster.
I still got it in my yard.
It's a complete disaster.
They said it wasn't ours, I'm like, okay, it's not yours, you're the only backhoe worker.
It's nobody's.
Your backhoe's right there, you're missing the piece. I, I blew out a two-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollar tire, but it's not your responsibility. I hate it, but I can see the frustration of a bunch of people in this town that frequent these roads, especially your side road, they drive by every day to go home. Uh, you know, Ward Four is, is horrible.
It's awful.
It's worse than Ward One.
Tampa Street, Coit Ave, it is.
But Dave, another thing we, we talked about numerous times, where after the end of August, they got ninety days before they pave. They should not be able to open up any more road construction. We should pass that ordinance, get something in effect immediately, where after August, because they got September, October, November, the plants close, they have the ninety days to pave everything, where we don't go through another Wakefield Street or River Street all winter long.
The, the only thing, the only concern I have, Angelo, is in their defense, they have to wait for settlement, and that's why, but again, if you start in April, May, June, that settlement hopefully will take place. I mean, I know when the sewer department did the, uh, sewer main on Main Street, they sat there every night basically with a water truck, hosing it down to compact it, backfill, hose it down, compact it, to get Main Street open right away. So, there, I know it occurs a little more expense for them, but they, they need to get these roads wound up and, and back...
We gotta do something.
Can't there be a clause in the contract that if they don't finish by a certain time?
We don't, we didn't write the contract.
That it's...
They didn't do it, they had no clause.
The PUC protects them also.
So we can't put anything in there that says if you don't finish by a certain time, there's a day, a daily fine.
For road opening permits.
Council, the, the contracts with Kent County Water, it's not with the town of West Warwick.
Right.
What they receive from the town of West Warwick is a permit to open the road. You could put conditions on the permit, and, and maybe, you know, the town oughta, moving forward, put kitchen...
Exactly.
A hundred percent.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, you're just gonna be doing jobs, and, so they won't do it in West Warwick, but they'll go everywhere else. And it's just gonna leave us hanging anyway.
Yeah.
No, I agree, and then we also have on here telephone poles.
Same thing.
What, West Warwick is, is due to change two-hundred-and-eighty poles out in the town of West Warwick, because they're looking to, um, close down the grid section on Goff Avenue and moving that further up the street. They're putting in taller poles. They're tearing up people's sidewalks, driveways, and, you know, when we sit there and say, you're responsible for your sidewalk, and we're, we're trying to hold them accountable for their sidewalk, and then all of a sudden, here comes two poles sitting in the middle of your sidewalk for years on end, not even longer than roads.
And the piles of dirt all around when the people use their snow blower?
They, they hit it, whatever.
When is that supposed to take place?
They've already started, if you look, all down Main Street from here, from Goff Ave all the way down, we drive by them every day, all the way down past Max Bowaway, they started replacing, and, and then Goff Avenue, they replaced all them, because that's where the transfer station is.
Will that be fixed before winter?
I, I can tell you right now personally...
No.
Joe Agenti is doing a phenomenal job, he has connections with all three, um, I gave him my connection through our company, National Grid, and then in, in, in the chain of command, his National Grid goes first, fire is second. And that's the other thing, we don't have enough manpower to, to continue our fire department to get all these done. And then Cox is third, Verizon's last, so it actually goes down that list and as, so if you've got everybody going in tandem, and, and Joe Agenti does that, he, he calls one, okay, it's getting done this day, can you be, and then works with ours, our fire department's a little slower, because there's only two guys doing that. Um, and two-hundred-and-eighty poles is a little excessive for them, just with two guys, plus their normal everyday jobs. Um, so, we, we just need to get on top of, and that's the other thing I just found out, according to Verizon, National Grid is now taking over all the poles, even though it says Verizon on it. Verizon owns the poles, but now National Grid may be taking them all over, so you gotta check into who's actually responsible. The other thing, too, is fixing the sidewalks when they're done. I mean, they don't, they, they said they don't have the manpower to fix our sidewalks. They have the manpower to drill a hole, but not fix the sidewalk, that's a little excessive. I mean, they don't wanna put the, uh, cement in place, they just, so then we end up doing it. I just, I just had it done in Phoenix, where the sidewalk was that way for, uh...
And we shouldn't have to absorb that cost.
Mr. Joplin's property, three years the telephone pole was there, two poles, they took the pole out finally, they said they're not fixing the sidewalk, we had to go out there and fix the sidewalk.
Again, time res- give them a time limit, if they don't, they're gonna get fined.
They just come in and change the poles, they don't even check with us, they just do it. That, it's, it's, they don't have to get a road opening permit, nothing for that, they just come in and do it. They're, they don't come to the town for any type of...
They don't have any permit at all for the sidewalks?
Nothing.
Not for, not, they, they have a right, because it's a right of way, and they're a utility, they have a right to access the right of way without any authorization from the town.
And when they're ruining town property...
Well, that's a, that's a...
That's a different story, because they are ruining town property, why should the taxpayers, like David said, pay to have that sidewalk refurbished?
Alright.
Or redone, when they dug it up?
I agree.
Those are things we need to work on, and...
Well, we gotta work on it sooner now than later, because now we're gonna end up, you only got two, three more months, we're done.
What's our legal issues with that?
All we have to do is make sure notice is provided beforehand, and if they wanna, uh, bring them out before the PUC, because they haven't provided proper legal notice, they can, but once the notice has been sent, as long as the ordinance does not contradict state law, state regulations, or anything out of the PUC, you're all set. But notice has to be provided.
Well, PUC has no control over our ordinances.
No, 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 I'm saying, PUC with Kent County Water Authority, if there's a provision that allows them to supersede the town local ordinance, the town has to play along with that. If there's no rule or regulation or state law that prohibits the town from doing this, you're all set.
But, we are not stopping the water company from it, we're stopping the contractors, which has no jurisdiction over...
The contractors are representatives of companies, so they sign the contract, Kent, Kent County Water Authority is not sending a crew out there, they're hiring a separate contract, so basically, you're trying to do an end run, you're not, you don't wanna become a party to a contract, but as far as, say, the road openings are concerned, you're gonna put certain conditions on those road openings to make sure that they're gonna be put back in the same way they were, without any future expense to the taxpayer, which is gonna be a little bit more difficult, it's easier said than done. Because now what's gonna happen is Kent County Water Authority's gonna have to add that expense into their contract with the contractor, so... I mean, there's a way to do it, there's a way to do it, but I mean, there's gonna be legal challenge, because they're gonna say, we are under the auspices of the PUC, as far as Kent County Water Authority is PUC, and you are not allowed to invade or interfere with the contractual rights, say, with any contractor, to do a road job.
Can't we sit in on discussions when this happens?
No.
As a representative of the town?
No, that's why we have so appointments.
Representatives of the town are your, your two appointees.
Alright, so we should do, any complaints we have in Ward Four, Ward One, to call the PUC and complain.
No, 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 you should go to Kent County Water Authority.
I call PUC, they said they have no control over it.
Every, um, and I just sent both of you the next, uh, Kent County Water Authority meeting agenda and meeting list, have your people go to the Kent County Water Authority and ask them point blank at their meetings, and then go to the PUC.
They're public meetings, they're at three-thirty. It's during the middle of the day.
But, but they can't answer the question, I spoke to them on Friday.
Hold on one second, please.
But the point what I'm trying to get at is, you are in the wrong, the wrong authority here. This legislative body can't do anything with the Kent County Water Authority, can't do anything with the PUC unless you want to sue them.
Bring your two appointees...
Just state your name and address for the record, then you can speak.
Vincent Marzullo, twenty-eight Crossland Road. For almost a month now, I've been having ongoing conversations with Councilman Padula, and as he expressed, I mean, people are just frustrated, it's certainly a safety and a hazard issue, not only in, in our ward, but I, I haven't traveled the, the other areas of the town that you described, they're in the same situation. On Friday, I had a conversation with Tim Brown, and then I also called, um, Bob Boyer. What was, as well as updating Councilman Padula on what I learned, which seems mind-boggling. That body that has the jurisdiction over those contractors is not, they're not governing. There are no benchmarks or timetables in, in the contracts that that authority has approved, two of which are our people. I mean, my sug- one of my suggestions is, the town manager and one of, one and two of the councilmen here should summon those two West Warwick appointees here to have a contract, uh, kind of conversation with them about how they're governing, and why are they, why are they entering into contracts that don't provide the oversight and the timetable in which to execute and perform these jobs? I mean, this, this is absurd. And to, and essentially, what I was hearing from Boyer and from, uh, Tim Brown, is that they're in a held hostage situation, they can't get answers from either Britto or Carty. I asked Tim, who would have the influence over Carty, since he's the sub to Britto, because apparently Carty is spread out so thin doing airport work, DOT work, that, you know, we're, we're on, on low man on the totem pole. But for them to come into here four weeks ago and to prep and tear up all those roads, and then to abandon our community, you know, I mean, thi- this is irresponsible. And what I also was hearing from Tim, that their next step, he feels, may only be to consider legal action, which wouldn't happen until the August meeting, which is three weeks from now.
That was not, this is the last meeting in August, correct? That was not, this is the last meeting in August, correct?
So, so, you know, w- w- we may have to wait three weeks for them to consider whether they're gonna take any legal action or not. I mean, if that is the case, wh- what can we do to influence and have conversation with our appointees to make sure that there's proper, proper oversight?
You had it with them. I've been discussing this with.
But I'm not the appointing authority. You, you.
I've been, I've been having this conversation with them for two years. My, my solution to it, as I told Boyer, don't pay them.
Right, that's what I was just gonna say.
Hold the payment back. You see how fast they do it. Now, they stopped working in Ward One because I guess they got word that they're not opening up any more roads. Now they went to Warwick. So they're catching up what they're doing at Warwick. Then they're gonna come back on River Street. When?
I mean, I think the point for all of us is, I mean, we're, we're all frustrated. No, no one apparently can give a definitive answer as to when Cardy is gonna show up in your ward, our ward, or the, when they start the next project in the town. And, and for that type of activity to be going on under the auspices of Kent County Water Authority, when we have two out of the five appointees there, I mean, you know, we got a three ring circus going on.
There's two points though. Number one, the council's authority ends upon the appointment process.
I understand.
That's number one. Number two.
We're not precluded from having a conversation though with those two people.
Absolutely not. But I've been saying that.
Well, let's put them on notice.
You can put them on notice all you want. Doesn't mean they're gonna show up.
Well, I understand.
But the point is, at their meeting.
They're public officials. Let's hold them publicly accountable.
Go to their meeting at three thirty.
I'll be there.
And ask them the same questions.
But you have the authority to bring them before you with this body.
No, listen, Vinny. No, the council does not have the authority.
You could ask them to come.
You can ask them.
Right.
But that's not having.
Play that card. All I'm saying is play that card.
Make a request. If they don't show up, they don't show up.
Will you play that card? I'll go to the meeting. Will you play the card?
We can go on all night with this.
Um, thank you.
Personally, I, I agree with Mr. Marzullo. You know, we gotta have a meeting with Bob Boyer and Frank Giorgio. It doesn't have to be here at a council meeting.
No, it can be.
Two councilmen can meet with them upstairs with the manager and, and discuss that matter with them.
Me and you right now.
I mean, you guys got your roads out, and Ward Four, I could say is a lot worse than Ward One right now, and, I mean, you, you have constituents you gotta report to. And same thing with you, Angelo. You have, you know, everybody's coming up that road to go up Wakefield Street.
I stopped.
And it's all our constituents.
I stopped going that way. I actually take a left and jump on thirty-seven.
Yeah, well, I'm stuck. I gotta go that way, and my customers gotta come that way to, to come to, to my shop.
No, I, I, I agree a hundred percent.
Yes.
Um, also, Mark, if we can reach out to National Grid and Verizon and see who's actually truly responsible for the poles now, and get them.
I did get a notice. Um, I do have that information in my office. I just don't know off the top of my head. I think it's National Grid.
But what we need to work on right now is the ordinance to stop the work after August. Stop a lot of calls and a lot of aggravation for the wintertime.
Tom?
Good evening, gentlemen. Tom Oates, Colonial Way. Uh, going back to these poles directly in front of my house, and then three up Colonial Way, they replaced the poles. They cut them, put new poles in, and strapped the old pole to the new pole. Narragansett Electric, or whoever that, I forget what the names are anymore.
Those are good.
And, um, the West Warwick Town Fire Communication, they were in last summer, and put the, they, they moved, they hopped from one pole to the next. These poles were swapped out four years, maybe three, but I'm guessing at four. And myself and the neighbors got tired of the pile that was about three foot high, so we got rid, well, I can't do it, so the neighbor used my truck, and they cleaned up in front of all three poles, the big blocks of concrete and all the dirt that keeps getting screwed up and everyone's snow blowers and so on and so forth. And they cleaned that out, uh, using my truck last Octoberish.
That, that's unacceptable.
But it's, it's the, it's the Verizon, and I have a neighbor that works for Verizon, and he laughed, and he says, oh, no, that, then that's the last thing on the list. And he's a Verizon technician. And you have Cox, I understand they have two separate wires. The Verizon is a fiber optic cable.
We got one.
And you have.
No, Cox has one.
Right, so there, there's two separate cables, one for Verizon and one for Cox, I believe. And then you got the, uh, New England Telephone or the telephone lines, I'm sure they still have those too, but there's a lot of other utilities that haven't done their job.
Here's how the pecking order from the utilities goes. National Grid, Fire Alarm, Cox Communications, Verizon. That's all that's on the pole.
Okay, so now it's, it's the, it's the, the cable TV, Cox and Verizon that haven't done anything. If the Narragansett Electric is done and West Warwick has done their job, and these poles still hanging there.
What you can do is give us the pole numbers, and we can get it to Joe Argenti. Like I said, he, Joe Argenti spends a lot of time on the phone with National Grid. He has a gentleman that he has a personal contact that I gave to for our construction department. And what happens here, Tom, and I'm not sticking up for any utility company in particular, what happens is, National Grid goes and changes the pole, or Verizon changes the pole, and doesn't tell anybody else. So, the other companies don't know what's going on. There's no rhyme or reason. They just swap out the pole, and they don't tell anybody. So unless Cox, Verizon, and the Fire Department know those poles have been swapped, they're not, they're not putting on their schedule. It's not, it's not the last thing on their pecking order either, as any company.
It's a lack of communication.
It's a lack of communication. They don't even know the pole's been swapped out. And the only way that they know is through Joe Argenti. And he must spend at least ten hours a week. He comes in at five in the morning and, and, and figures out this stuff for us. And I, I get emails from him all day long about certain things. So, and, and, and he's at four, five in the morning, so he, he's just nonstop with this. So if we can get the information over to him, we can, he can start working on it. Alright, any other discussion on that? Next?
Extending grace period of sewer taxes by two weeks sponsored by Councilman Messier.
Can I, what's, what's the typical, uh, when it's late, what's the typical amount of grace period that's given? And we extended it by two weeks? Is that what we extended it by this time? John?
I ca- I can't answer for the, for the wastewater. Angelo can.
For this one, it's been extended for two weeks right now, correct?
We were a week late in sending out the bills, so we decided at the subcommittee meeting to give them an extra two weeks till August fifteenth, which is plenty of time.
Yeah.
So they have to.
Yeah, and I agree with that now. And my concern originally was just that, you know, people that are on vacations, and if they didn't get it, and maybe they were expecting it early, and they're gone, and they get it, like they show up, you know, back home now, and they're gone for a couple of weeks. That was my initial concern, but.
You know, I, I was leaving.
But I spoke to some people since then. What?
I was leaving for Maryland. I said, oh, man, I won't be back till the first. I better go pay my taxes. I, I ran in here Friday morning before I hit in the road.
So right now they have till the fifteenth of August, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
For the, for the waste, for the sewer bill.
Okay.
We said that we extended.
Yeah, Motive View was a different situation, but yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a reasonable extension.
Yeah, so I'm good.
We gave them an extra eight days, really.
Right, they, yeah, exactly.
Alright, that's enough of that. We know fifteen days.
I make mine quick.
August fifteenth.
Problem Properties, sponsored by Councilman Padula.
Uh, I know we all got these properties. Um, I spoke to Al to put some kind of an ordinance. In effect, um, one particular place that I'm having problems with now, and the chief probably sent the police down there a couple dozen times. We're using our resources, where our policeman could be doing something else. It's problem property. The landlord don't wanna hear it. We had a neighborhood meeting with some of them. We tried to resolve it through both parties, and I thanked the chief for setting that up for us, and the captain and the major and the lieutenant and, uh, Sandra for, uh, coming and, and, and setting it up. But, again, now they're tagging the mattresses, they're getting the stickers for them, and now they're not, they're out there for two weeks. Same property again, Al, Prospect Hill, them same two houses, um, it's, and I know other wards have the same problems. We can't get blood out of a stone from the tenants, because some of them are so uncooperative, and they do it on purpose. But we can get blood out of a stone from the landlord. The landlord should be responsible for these problem properties, because he's attracting the kind of people that actually we don't want in our town. They're troublesome. They have numerous run-ins with the police department constantly. And the chief's here now. Chief, you still here?
Yes.
How many times have you sent your officers off the top of your head? Matter of fact, I'm getting calls at eleven thirty at night, and I'm calling the police department myself because of what's going on. Hopefully, we resolved a little bit of that, but off the top of your head, in the past year, how many times have your officers been there? You can't count.
No. I can count. I don't have to.
Right. And, you know, again, our policeman could be doing something else. There could be an emergency call. You're taking them off there for nonsense. And it's completely nonsense. They're egging one another on. They're drinking, they're obnoxious, they're ripping up the streets. This goes on till one, two in the morning. One of the residents has two small kids. One has special needs. The kid wakes up in the middle of the night screaming. But, again, now that certain person has a problem with them, so two, something bad is gonna happen there eventually. Something bad drastically is gonna happen. Uh, it's been quiet since we met, and I knock on wood, but as I go by there and I keep an eye on that two times a day, there's always the jackpot out there, and our guys are picking it up. I called Al to see if we have some kind of ordinance where we can, instead of tying the hands of our minimum housing and our building official, they talked to me numerous times, it's the same place day in, day out. The problem is, though, is much like Tim mentioned with PUC. The Building Maintenance Code is a state code, state statute, state code. The Building Maintenance Code is what we have to operate under. We can't make our ordinances any more stringent than the Building Maintenance Code. We have a situation going on right now, and I'm not gonna give any details, because the case is pending. When I go before the, uh, the Building Siting Committee, or whatever the name of it is with the building office, I'm going back to December fourteenth of nineteen, uh, two thousand sixteen. I have three vile, official violation notices. I have seven in, inspection notices. We finally went in and we posted the building and ordered it vacated. An appeal was taken. So now we're off until at least August before the Building Siting, the Building Code, uh, Maintenance Code can hear, have a hearing and say whether or not we had the right to clo- close this place down.
Let me ask you a question. Sorry, go ahead.
I have, the, the, these are what, what our, th- this is the statute, and this is the code of what our building office is faced with. Their hands are tied because of this. There is only one reason why we can go in and close a building down, and that's if there's structural damage that's liable to have a collapse. Angelo, the, the process stinks. Al, I understand that point, but when we're using our resources and it's costing us X amount of dollars for the same troublesome property. The, the property you talked about, when I went in and I looked at the records, Angelo. I know they don't write it. There's, there's, no, oh, believe me, our building office, they're documented. But what can we do? We've gotta follow the state law. The hearing process, the list of things that we gotta go before. It's a cumbersome process that our building office has been on this one particular property since December of last year. I've got the thing. I'm meeting with the building office. I'm gonna prep them for their questions. I'm gonna go before the Hearing Maintenance Board, and hopefully they will say what our, our office did. This is a situation, I can't get into the facts, where it's a health hazard on one side, and there are sections of the building ready to collapse. Let me ask you a question. I own nineteen apartments at one time, here or there. When there was a violation, if there was a violation with garbage or mattresses, I, as the owner, the owner, got cited, not the tenant. We're doing that. And the owner's ignoring us. I understand that. We gotta put strict, stricter rules. We can't. We're governed by the, the, the state. It just doesn't seem, it doesn't seem like our hands are tied when it comes to our, our. The safety and welfare of our constituents. Our building code is the state building code. That's it. We can't do anything else. We can't make our building code more intensive than the state building code, because the state building code says you can't. So now, maybe the chief, if, if this continued. The next step is, every time we send a policeman there, somebody's gotta get arrested for disturbing the peace. Uh, whatever, whatever thing that they did are questioned, and they come into the station. Maybe that's the only alternative we'll have, is stop, let them guys stop being a nice guy and start arresting people. I can't answer to the police department. I can answer to the building and to the fire. And I can tell you that I work closely with the building office, and with Matt Manny and the fellows over in the fire department. Those guys are on top of everything, and then you come up with this stuff where the list goes on and on about what the violations are. And then all of a sudden it says, but you gotta give them notice, and you gotta have a hearing, and then they got more time, and they ignore it. So eventually, you close the place down, and I gotta go before the committee with, as I said, three violation notices, seven inspection notices, and hope that the, when I get before the building committee and say, two sections of this building are ready to collapse, that based on that, they're gonna say, okay, you were right in keeping the occupants out. Angelo, believe me, nobody wants this more than I do because of what I gotta put, put up with the, the building office. They're doing a hell of a job, but. It's awful disturbing when you got, now Prospect Hill, it, it's a beautiful section. I hung around up there when I was a kid. They got the condos up there. They take care of their properties, except for two or three properties. And then they call, and they say, if I did that, I'd be fined, or put a lien on my property. But because it's these two houses, how do they get along with? I don't have, I feel like a fool. They don't believe me when I say our hands are tied. That's baloney. I, I don't accept that. I don't think that our hands are tied. There's gotta be a way that we can stop these problem properties, these landlords that actually are slumlords. And that's the word that you have to use. The only way you're gonna do this through legislation, Angelo. I, I mean, believe me, I've gone through this. I've been preparing for this hearing coming up. I've been through the Building Maintenance Code. I've been through the Building Statutes. What can we do? It says in there, this is it. This is it. This is what your town is, is, Tim, legislation. It's, it's the legislation that the building code was adopted by the state. And the state then said, okay, all of your towns and cities, this is your building code. What do we do?
Let me ask you, we, we have a place, it might be the same when you're talking about where the house was condemned, and then I've, I've informed that people still live in part of the building. How, how can a landlord possibly be, be collecting?
Well, you got two issues. You gotta know if there's squatters in there.
No, no, there's people that are living there, like, that are actually living there. I'm sure Mark knows the house I'm talking about, that people are actually living there.
What do you think squatters do? Squatters actually live in the building without any contractual.
I, you're probably referring to what the one I'm going.
I'm sure it's the same one. I'm sure it's the same.
The one that I'm going to.
Yeah. So the landlord is making money off of this house, like, which is ridiculous for how bad it is.
Our building official has had that landlord in. As a matter of fact, I sent a, an email to the building official, and I said, in order for anything, what happened was the landlord wanted the building official to go in and do an inspection. Number one, because of the condition, the building official, for his health reasons, didn't wanna go in.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
So I sent him a letter, and I said, here's the steps you have to take. You've gotta have, uh, uh, expert opinion regarding that this condition has been corrected, that this condition has been corrected, and until that point in time, you do nothing. He's had the, that landlord in three times, and not one of those expert reports has come in. So next month we go, or this month, later this month, we go before Building Maintenance. Now, now the state, now if the state says landlord, the town was right, then it's there, it's, it's up to the state to go in and shut this place down, but you, you know, I know Angelo, you're frustrated. I can't tell you the frustration on my part.
I understand.
When I get the call from the building official saying, what do I do?
And when it's a place that's so clear, and some of these are so clearly in disrepair, so when it's a minor issue, it's like, how do we even stop that when it's, it's so obvious in some of these?
What, what Council Mess is talking about, this is a building that is bad enough, so the building official called me up, and he said, the landlord wants me to go in and do another inspection. I don't wanna go in there for my health reasons. That's how bad the place is. I know exactly what you're talking about.
Alright, you can probably go on about.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't, I don't know what the, I'm gonna tell my constituents to call the state. I'll, I'll get you the, I'll get you the number. That's another thing. The number in their book, you call it, you don't get any. Nobody. I'll get you the number, Angelo.
Thank you.
Boy, we're batting a thousand tonight.
Saint Teresa's Festival to be held September thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, sponsored by Councilman L. Chardy.
Uh, I put this on the agenda, because I've had discussion with, with Pastor Martins, uh, from Saint Teresa's Church. It's, uh, located on Main Street in between the FOP and Rocks Market. Um, Saint Teresa's, the, the, Saint Teresa Feast is actually, uh, set. Saint Teresa's, the, Saint Teresa Feast is actually September thirtieth, and they're talking about holding a festival. We are talking about the location. I, I spoke with the chief on this. It's a difficult location over there because there's no land. So hopefully the pastor will, will be speaking again and, and will find a place to, to hold this feast. So I'm not gonna elaborate anymore on that. Pay him on the next one.
Townwide Camera is sponsored by Councilman Lachardi.
Pastor. Pastor's not here.
Who's, oh.
No, John, John's not a pastor.
He's a priest. Okay, never mind.
Uh, Townwide Camera is sponsored by Councilman Lachardi.
Okay, during the past, I don't know, so we'll say the, the month. But, um, as everybody has seen, if, if you're on social media, you've seen that there are many dumping sites where people are, are, are just dump, they're, they're loading their trucks, they're going out in the middle of the night, and they're just dumping debris and trash. And there's a lot that's happening in Ward Four. I've noticed some, there's about three dumping spots on Pulaski Street. There's one on One Seventeen. I've gotten with, with Dave Lombari, and because we're, we're we're forced right now to be reactionary to this. Where, what do we do? We go in and pick it up. Why? Because it's an eyesore. And, you know, like Angelo said, we're using our own resources for this all the time, but we're, we're bas- I think it, we're telling people, "It's okay, you can do this", because there's no consequence. You're going in, you're dumping, we're gonna clean it up. And, and it's not right. So in speaking with Dave, um, he identified about ten, ten dumping zones, dumping spots around town. Most are in Ward One and Ward Four, because it's, it's easily accessible and poorly, poorly lit. So Dave had done some research, uh, he's not here tonight, uh, he's away, but, uh, he, he's done some research and, you know, in, in our conversations, and I think it's a good idea. He wants to get a camera.
They probably pay for themselves.
And, and that's the thing. It's a camera that anywhere between five and eight thousand dollars, he
I still think that's an awful lot of money.
But, well, hang on, hang on. He got one quote, um, which obviously you're not gonna go with the quote. It is an investment, but what I'm looking to do is, is put together a hefty fine for these people that are illegally dumping. And it, there's no excuse to it. It's not like you're, you're littering or something falls out the back of a car. These people are physically loading a truck, purposely going out in the middle of the night when nobody's around, dumping that truck on somebody else's property or abandoned property, and we get stuck doing the legwork to clean it up. So I'm looking, I put this on the agenda to discuss it. I do wanna speak with Dave again. I don't wanna do a lot of research with it if the council doesn't have an appetite for it. But I'm looking at fines of like a thousand dollars for the first offense. Two thousand for a second, three for a third, and that, those fines, and it's gonna happen. It might not be all this year, but I'm thinking within the next couple of years, those fines that we collect could go towards paying the cost of that camera. And if it exceeds that, we put it in a fund to go and buy a, a second camera. And those cameras, we moved around town in different places. So be, there's a lot of it. I mean, you, you look over Ward Four, I mean, it's constantly, Tom Oates is telling me all the time, "Did you see this one on Pulaski Street? It's already cleaned up. Did you see this one on Pulaski Street? Well, we just cleaned it up. No, there's another one." And, and it's, it's really getting sickening. It makes our community look, look awful.
Jason, there's only one thing that I disagree with this whole thing. I agree on everything. But out of ten dumpsters, one of them's gonna have money. The other ones aren't gonna have anything.
I gotta
Now what do you do? It's not that easy.
That was my first thought, too. I actually, I was walking out of town hall the other day, I bumped into Dave. He, he talked a little bit about this, which I think is a great idea. But he mentioned a high fine, say maybe a thousand dollars, which in theory sounds good, but how will you get these people who are dumping to pay a thousand dollars?
Can it, can it be tied to your license, like, like, or now?
We can't do that, the state can.
Well, one of the things
We have to do something, because it's just, if we let it go, it's, it's like we're, we're allowing it.
No, but Jay
And we're just gonna keep cleaning it up.
The situation on Pulaski Street, Dave took me to the site, and he showed me homeless person described the vehicle, license plate number, the whole nine yards. Has that person been brought in? Anything? Nothing's been done. We, somebody's turned in the license plate and everything of that individual dumping. And actually, the pilot, Tom Oates, had, had pictures, names, and phone numbers on it, if I cry out loud. I, I don't know how much more you need for evidence to go after somebody. If I'm going through and I look at a piece of paper that says, "Angelo Padula", I'm gonna go knock on the door and say, "Hey Angelo, where'd you get this? Why is this stuff in this town?" He's gonna say, "Well, I had a guy come out." "Well, which guy?" He's gonna tell me which guy, 'cause he's not gonna pay the thousand dollar fine. You know, the problem is, and I, I agree with the camera, I believe in catching them. The problem is, what do we do to enforce it? We have a homeless group in that area describe the vehicle, the two females, the, everybody who got out of the car, and the plate number. Nothing's been done. That's why I don't wanna spend money when nothing's gonna get done anyway.
So that went to who, from the homeless people?
Dave Lombari. He sat in his truck, brought me to the site, told me everything about it.
No, it, it is?
It is a criminal.
It is a criminal.
Hold on, Tom. Chief?
So the, the one case you're talking about, they did provide a plate. However, the plate for a U-Haul truck did not match any U-Haul trucks. So we tried to get those plates, run a couple of different combinations. Maybe they missed the number, maybe they did whatever. So we were unable to locate that vehicle at the time. This was on the eighteenth of July. And then there was another plate that was given that the officer has made contact with the resident. Um, the people gave descriptions, but it doesn't really match the description. They're denying that they were there. So we're still following up on that one. But as far as the first plate, like I said, it did not match.
Yeah, again, you put
You gotta remember, you gotta get license recognition plates, uh, cameras. License plate recognition cameras.
Well, Providence has this, correct? Does Providence have a similar, uh, cameras set up for dumping? They don't?
So, Councilman, just a quick question. So it's, it's actually, it's one camera, two dummies. So it's kind of a, is it a hit or miss as to where we position it, or?
I wasn't going to say this, two dummies, 'cause I didn't wanna give people the opportunity to you know, decoys.
There could be two decoys.
Two decoys.
But there could be two or three cameras, depending on the price.
Right. It's, it's something, it's something that I
I, I don't wanna cut you off, so we're not here all night discussing cameras. I agree, put it out to bid, see what they have. There's
Yeah, that's
We can direct Dave to go out to bid. Right now, he's got one bid. Just, it's not even, it's just
It's a quote. It's not a bid, it's a quote.
He got a quote from a camera company.
I'm sure there are others out there.
I can tell you right now, you do need license plate recognition cameras, which are a lot more money than a regular camera. The lighting on it does affect the license plate at night, especially.
All right, so, all right, so with, if we don't go this route, there's still dumping that's going to go on. What are we gonna do about it? Because we can't ignore it.
Providence does have, so I'm just gonna, you might wanna look into, look into Providence and see, and if you wanna reach out, maybe to someone there. Providence does have the cameras, the dumping, the cameras for
Again, I, I'm, I'm saying, put it out to bid, see what the expense is, and we can go from there. The only request I have is Dave needs to supply, 'cause it's not in our budget.
I know.
So Dave would need to say, "I'm gonna cut this out of my budget and put this in my budget."
I had that conversation with Mr. Lombardi.
Okay, um, that's, that's the only concern I have.
Will the, um, C-Click-Fix program maybe address that, if somebody sees something happen? And they go into the program?
It's like at two in the morning.
Well, that's the thing, what's the reaction time? Is it, is it that quick?
No, the C-Click is total opposite of that. That's to report something that can be addressed in the future. The whole purpose for the police department's perspective anyways, I don't wanna know about it two or three days later. Yeah, it'll help us.
Right, well, that's my question. Is it a quick response time?
Not at all. Would it be day two, could be a weekend if, if it goes through the weekend.
So, like I said, have Dave go out to bid, see what he has, and then we can discuss it from there.
Town manager's report?
I'll try to, I'll, I'll beat this very, very brief, because we're, we're carrying on. Um, two items I just wanted to mention. One is, um, the, the council about a month and a half ago passed a resolution to the General Assembly with regard to what's referred to as the green legislation. That's an automatic extension of contracts. The General Assembly passed, uh, passed the, uh, the legislation, however, the governor vetoed it. So the legislation at this point is dead. There will be no automatic extension of contracts. They also received a notice from the League of Cities and Towns today notifying us that the, uh, the Senate is supposed to be reconvening on Thursday to readdress the budget. And the understanding is that they will be passing the House's version of the budget and then instituting the car tax. The town had sent out its tax bills. We couldn't wait any longer. We had to make a judgment call with regards to sending out our automobile tax bills because we needed the revenue coming in. So at some point, we're going to have to address, um, how we are going to handle, um, credits or credits moving forward or rebates on these tax bills. That'll be a discussion. That'll be ongoing internally, and we will get back to you when we have some suggestions on how to solve that.
Any questions for Mark? Thank you.
Financial update?
I'll try to make this as brief as Mark made his, but I do have three items I did wanna mention to the council. One of them I had previous, previously mentioned that had to do with the refunding of the two thousand and seven and two thousand and nine bonds. I want to let the council know that we did actually complete that process, uh, that close has take, taken place. And the savings from that, just as a reminder, as I mentioned before, is gonna be approximately sixty thousand dollars per year for ten-plus years for the remaining life of the bond. So that's, that's a big savings that we'll be able to look forward to in the debt service budget. Uh, second item I wanted to mention, we did put out with, uh, working with, um, with our financial advisor, we did issue a RFP for either a bond or a lease option for the wind turbines that we're still looking to permanently finance. We did receive six bids on the bond side and one for the lease. We're in the process of actually analyzing those to see what the best option will be for the permanent financing. And those rates all vary at around mid-threes, as far as the percentage goes, which is better than what the performers were initially in the, um, in the analysis that we had done for the wind turbine project. And the last item I wanted to mention was just regarding the fiscal year-end audit for the fiscal year that just completed on June thirtieth. Uh, that audit has started. Uh, we're working very closely with Markham to actually meet a deadline of December thirty-first, which has not been done by this town for several years, if any. I know the time I've been here, it has not happened for a lot of different reasons. However, we're working aggressively with Markham to ensure that this year it is actually completed on time. And, uh, Mark and I have been spending a lot of time actually looking at the numbers uh, as we currently have them and any, um, any additional items that have not yet been accrued back to June. So we'll be reporting up to the council back on that shortly.
Thank you. Any questions for John?
Thank you.
Ward report?
Five. Um, just a few updates. One, uh, the Crumpton Meadows condo development out of Butts, Drawbridge Drive in Medieval in the Nottingham section, that is still ongoing. Um, I've been working with constituents, attending the meetings and, you know, the planning board meetings, and it just seems to be going on and on and on, but we are aggressively, uh, working to stop that development. The two houses at the bottom of East Grande Jav that have been sitting there vacant for the longest time, they're the Walgreens. Uh, they are finally being addressed. They're, um, they're gonna refurbish them, is that correct? We've, we've, if you've driven by, you've seen the fences go up, which indicates to me they're gonna start doing some kind of work.
They're gonna, I think they're gonna take down secondary structure.
Small ones coming down.
And refurbish the main building. And they, they have applied for, and I believe they've received their permits.
Good to know. The other thing is, the, uh, the Station nightclub memorial, uh, a few constituents have contacted me. A couple of people were concerned that the landscaping wasn't being kept up, uh, which and, and that there was litter, believe it or not, in this memorial. I just wanna state for the record that there is separate funding put aside by the memorial fund to address that. It is not our DPW who's in charge of that. Uh, we did provide some barrels, uh, for the dedication, just for the overflow of trash. I, I was actually sort of shocked to hear that there was any type of litter at this memorial site, but, you know, it could be as simple as the wind, wind's blowing and, and it's going in there. So I think, you know, this is a community effort. If people are in the memorial or walking by and you see something, just bend down, pick it up, you know, keep the area clean. But, uh, you know, I, I actually got that, a couple of calls from a couple of people regarding the, the landscaping, and actually drove by in the following, the following day. And, um, the landscapers were there cleaning it up. So I'm under the belief that it will be addressed by the memorial company, and they have the funding for that.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you. Four?
I have one thing. I've been working for, for a little bit, for like the last month, on putting together a family entertainment series to be held in Crumpton Playground. Uh, we secured a sponsor, Mutual Properties, who is the owner of, uh, New London Square, which most notably Jell's Kitchen. And we have a new finish, uh, new printing, uh, business in there, Finish Line Printing. And they've actually done all the printing for us for nothing. So it should be a, a really good series. Uh, it takes place August sixth, thirteenth, and twentieth, six o'clock on Sunday nights. Bring the kids, bring the grandkids. There's flyers out in the, uh, in the corridor for you to take. I tried to put it online. I will be putting a banner up. So it, it's gonna be a good time. It's, it's a quick event each night. It's an hour. That's it. Bring the kids, enjoy the show, and leave. So, but it, it's a free event for the town, so
This Sunday, right?
This, this starts this Sunday. And, uh, it's sponsored by Ward Four, it's held in Ward Four, it's done by the Ward Four Councilmen, so, you know, we'll take care of Ward Four. So, thank you.
I'll be there, walk down from the studio. Three. This one actually ties into Ward Four. One of my things, the, the stop signs on Pulaski. I wanna thank Jay for, uh, spearheading that campaign. I think, you know, I live, I live right there, so I probably drive by it like ten times a day. I think they're working well. I mean, I don't know what you've noticed in your time there. I think he squared the police department to put up the warning signs. People are not gonna notice them at first, like anything else. You know, some people say, "What if somebody runs the stop sign?" I mean, we can only do so much. I can't like go out there and grab him and pull the car back. I mean, there's only so much we can do, but
My, my feeling on that is, it's a little bit more, I say maybe abrasive, but, uh, there's a stop sign there. Just like, so you're driving on the road, and you see a stop sign, you stop. If it's a red light, you stop. Um, I understand they're new. We've, I put a lot of work into that as far as observing, and the neighbors came to me. I didn't go to them. And so I observed it. I, I believe I'm, I'm justified in doing it. I did contact the chief because people are contacting me saying, "I stopped at the stop sign, and people are coming right across through. They're not stopping or they're rolling." I'm just looking at that as, what if that's a kid? What if you don't stop and there's a kid out there? You hit a kid. You know, there is a daycare over there. Um, it wasn't done just for the daycare, but there is a daycare there. It's a business in town. Kids are unpredictable, they're young kids. I've seen them run across the street. So bottom line is, stop at the stop sign. There will be patrol officers over there now. It's not done as a speed trap, but, you know, it, again, it's a stop sign, and you stop at the stop sign. Period.
Yeah, I think, I think some people were concerned that there was no warning for the stop sign, but you made up a good point. If a child comes in the road, there's no warning that the kid just crossed the road. You gotta pay attention when you're driving. Pretty simple.
It's a law. Stop.
Uh, and then, and then one, my other, um, the car show, wasn't able to make the car show last week. I did get some, I did get some complaints of some neighbors not realizing that the road would be shut down. Now, I'm all for the car show.
Yeah, we got a lot of complaints.
I just wanna know, and what, what is our protocol for, um, letting the businesses and the people on the streets know when we close down the street? Do we send out a letter to the people? And if, if we don't, maybe in the future when we do events over there when we close, close the street down? I know specifically, um, the road, the church over there, Saint John, Saint John Street was the one where, 'cause it's a one-way, they weren't able to get out. Um, and I know some of the businesses had complained, but I just don't know, do we
I know in the past that they've contacted the business and made them aware that the, the time and the date of the car show. So I, that may have been something that fell through the cracks. I'm not really sure.
In the future, if we have, I mean, if we have any events, I mean, there's only a couple a year.
That's an annual event.
Is that the parade, I mean, that, the parade and, uh, and the tree lighting? And just in the future, if we could just maybe do a better job of, you know, I take responsibility for that. You know, just letting the neighbors know that we're gonna be closing down the street. It's only, what, an hour and a half anyway? But just so they're aware and they can make arrangements. That's all I got. Ward three.
Two. North Pleasant Street. We have, obviously, those condos going in over there. Getting a lot of complaints every morning, seven AM, da, 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 da. It's my new alarm clock, I can tell you that. They do wait till seven AM exactly, I will give them that. They're jackhammering nothing but ledge out of there. And if we can reach out to the contractor, maybe start at eight o'clock. I know it's a tough one, I know the ordinance says 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Fortunately, I'm out of the house by 7:15, so I don't hear it, but I feel bad for the people who live on Bradford Court. It's right in their backyard and that's all they're hearing from 7:00 AM till about 6:00 PM every night, Monday through Sunday. And it's just, it's, if I'm hearing it from a quarter mile away in my backyard.
I mean, I will reach out to the contractor, he's been, he's been very cooperative.
He's been pretty, he's been pretty good, yes.
He's usually good with the neighbors, I know that they are, they're expending tremendous amounts of money on that project. And I think a lot more money than I expected too. This, that is going to be an ongoing process, that property is all ledge. And.
Two years on ledge.
As opposed to blasting, it's a better option, it takes a lot longer, but it's a lot safer and it's a lot, it protects the abutting homes from damage.
Yep.
But I will reach out to him and I will see if they would consider starting at 8:00 AM rather than 7:00.
Also, you sent me a message about Lip and Milk. Has that been sold to another party?
I heard that rumor.
No. Still, still the same group out of New York, there's, they're actually just had their closing.
Because what I've been seeing in the past year is stabilizing the building, basically going in, putting the studs up, stabilizing the building, so it'd be safer than the work in there.
That's correct.
So on. And then when I saw that you said that they're going to be closing, I'm like, wait a minute, I thought this was all taking care of it.
Well, yeah, so it was in a receivership and it was under agreement and it's part of the receivership. And the buyer was working with Rhode Island Housing to try to put together a closing. Under the receivership, the contractor was working with the receiver, receiver's a individual named John Dorsey, he's an attorney. They were working under, under his receivership and they were, they were actually paying for the contractors to go in there and shore up that building. They closed, I believe it was last Thursday.
Yep.
On the property. They'll be moving forward with a groundbreaking, they have a supervisor who's coming in from New Jersey, who's licensed in Rhode Island. He'll be setting up shop on site, they're going to start, I believe, in September, working on that property full-time. Right now, they're going through analyzing bids for contractors to do certain elements of work. They're going to be working on that building, they're going to have multiple contractors in there, working pretty much around the clock on that property, to try to get that project done within a year.
Okay, I was just wondering, it'll be my third groundbreaking there, so.
Yeah, it's the same, same developer though.
And Family Dollar, looks like it's going right along. Went away for a couple of days and it looks like they got the foundation in and some rebar, about 15 feet high.
I was over there today, I saw that, yeah.
Just make, just keep on top, make sure, I know, luckily, they didn't have to tear into Maple Avenue.
Right.
I happened to go by there and I said, well, why are they putting a drain in at 7 o'clock at night? So I, me and Dave Lombari took a ride by at 7 o'clock at night and they had just finished the drain, ironically, but they didn't.
So they came in from the backside?
Yeah, but they came in the backside, they didn't have to, and they, and they had to go get a permit the following day. But fortunately, they didn't have to tear up that new road, so that was great news when I got there, the only thing they had to do was fix the sidewalk. That's all I have, Angelo, one?
I've been working with the town manager on a problem we have at Westcat Terrace, the elderly manor. They moved the bus stop about 300 yards away from the elderly and people have wheelchairs, they have walkers. I want to thank Mark for working digitally, working with the state and Ripta, I know it's not easy, Mark got some progress done. I just want the residents to know that we understand their concern, we're working as fast as we can, it's not a town issue. We explained to a couple of residents what's going on, me and Mark are going to meet Thursday to see an alternative place, they're willing to change it again. But what you have, you have a neighbor across the street who kept calling complaining that there was urinating near the thing and it's not the residents, it's just everybody else. But the residents had to suffer for it, which I don't think was right, because you call the police, you have them removed, we're penalizing 200 residents there, that are handicapped, most of them. And you, you know what's going on there, everyone else knows what's going on there, but we are working and again, Mark, thank you. That should be resolved shortly, hopefully, we're not dealing with the contractor. Secondly, the LaCroy family bought the West Valley in. I've stayed in contact with the LaCroy's from the beginning till now, he wants to keep it as it was. Thankfully, that, that will reopen again as a banquet hall. Working on that and again, the roads on River Street, I just, we already went through that, so that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Upcoming appointments, planning board, one alternate, alternate member of technology committee, Arctic redevelopment, sewer use tax board, board of tenant affairs and public comment, anything from the council? Anything from the public? Sorry, I know you said you had something to speak on, do you want to speak? Just state your name, you can, you can just come on up, state your name for the record and you can.
Just yell loud, stay right there.
My nursemaid's telling me it's time for bed.
One thing that reminds me is as I go out the door, your right door is always locked. And it's hard to open these doors and at the police department. The Americans with Disability Act states that they can't, shouldn't have more than 20 pounds of pressure needed to open the doors. And then they have to close at a certain rate, so that when I try to come in, I get banged by the door. And I'd rather not go to the Human Rights Commission. The other thing I'm asking is when the town vehicles park in back here, particularly at the police department, where it curves around, where the three posts are, they back up over the sidewalk. And when you do it over there where the police department is, you have to come back and go down the road to get back around that little area. And that's dangerous. I live over on Shippey Avenue, my name is Michael Gadro. And since we've put, had these containers for trash, they're left out all over the road. Cars are speed up that way, I have cars that go the wrong way on one-way streets, it's dangerous for me to travel there, so I come down around here. And I have pictures of vehicles in the back, the fire, one of the fire maintenance truck. Over here, it's not bad because I can go into the parking lot. At the police department, I have to come out, go down, either cross the street, go down, come back. Or go down the side of the road where they, they make a turn.
That should be an easy fix, Mark, and if you could just, and I know the chief's taking note back there, but if you can let all town employees know that they're not the only ones that park there.
Over there, yeah.
To make sure that.
But it's town vehicles.
Yep.
You know, because I come down early morning and in the evening to walk around.
We, we agree with you 100%, they shouldn't be blocking the sidewalks.
And one other item I'd like to address with the town council is if you have a complaint against a police officer and you go to the station and you request a complaint form, you have someone come out and want to talk to you, which is, that is intimidation. When I have a complaint against an officer, I should be able to go in, get the form and leave and fill it out. What I've had is police tell me, we're not going to take your complaint. I'm a stubborn SOB, when you tell me that, I'm going to move further. I have had 10 people that I've talked with that said they've done the same thing and the policeman, either a sergeant or a lieutenant comes out and tells them they're not going to take the complaint. I'd like to see simple instructions posted in the foyer on what you're supposed to do to file a complaint. A lot, number of people don't have computers and they're not savvy. So when an officer comes out and talks to you, then goes back, and then he comes back 20 minutes later and says, I'm not going to take your complaint, people walk away.
All right, I see the chief's writing that down, if you want, you could speak to him after the meeting too, I'm sure.
I'm sorry, I can't, I have a complaint against the town.
No, I, oh, okay.
Okay, so I cannot talk to the town manager or the police.
He just brought up one thing that I forgot, since it went on social media.
Sorry.
About the garbage, about the garbage. I got a few calls from some of my constituents, some, and you answered, one, one when it came on. Social media. What is the rules, because some of my constituents that live on a one-way and on a dead-end street, the garbage is collected.
It's a, it's.
And some isn't. Yeah, I mean, either, I mean, I remember me and you having this conversation a while ago and you always said that, you always brought yours at the end of the street. But you have a few dead-end streets, a few one-ways, that you don't have to bring your garbage on either side, they pick up curbside. So one truck goes up, he picks it up, he comes back down, he backs up, in a dead-end street, he takes the other side. Now you have another street where he probably could even turn, it would be hard to turn around, but he's not picking it up there, I mean.
It's a strange thing because that situation that we're talking about.
Well, no, I'm not talking about particularly that situation, that's not my constituent. I'm talking about a few constituents that I have that have, they say such and such a street, it's picked up, now this street's not, why?
I got, I got the same thing in my ward off Barker Street, there's a dead-end road over there, everybody wheels to the other side. Me, mine's always been that way, I'm not looking for any special treatment, my neighbor bought his house in 2003, 2004, he's always brought it up. But again, I, I don't know why, Angelo.
No special treatment at all, you should get the same rights, none less and none more.
Believe it or not, I don't mind it, I like it up there, it's easier.
But there's people, you've got to understand, when there's snow and that night before our plows come off, they do come. The elderly people, they're coming to a point where they can't pull the trash can over the snow and bring it to the other side. I mean, we hired.
Mr. Nunes from Mega has, if anybody, if we have that situation, get it to Dave Lombari or they'll give you Mega's number and you can call them. The strange one, the one that I answered on, online, was when they called, their trash was resolved and they were picking up the trash on the right side.
But not the recycling.
But not the recycling. It's the same truck, same size trucks, so I don't know why it can't be resolved or why it could be resolved. There are certain neighborhoods that, you know, they come right out of their garage with it and pull it across the street and they don't get into that. Everybody has a different situation.
Robert Street, they'll, I've seen it, they drive the, like, the other side of the road to pick it up, so it's not consistent, yeah.
It's not, and it should be, when we hired them, they knew what they were getting into, they knew us, but we had that concern before they went privatized, they privatized it. Where they were going to take care of that situation. And now we're four years into it and they're not taking care of it.
I'm going to assume, councilman, I'm going to assume that they have a policy and a practice and that this is a driver issue. Because no, they would not just arbitrarily decide.
I agree.
One situation, you have to have it on one side, the other one, I'll pull up and I'll back down.
Some of the strange things, Mark, that I've been hearing is the driver will get out of the truck, drag the barrel across the street, empty it, but leave it on that side of the street. If they're going to get, if they can't drive their trucks, hey, I understand, but if they're going to pull the trash can to the other side, pick it up and dump it, get back out and put it back where you got it.
I'm just, I'm just thinking that they have a practice, whatever that practice is, I don't know what the practice is, I have.
We'd have to get with Mr. Nunes.
We'd have to find out, but whatever it is, it should be consistent.
I remember that they said they were going to cater to the people who are on one-way streets and dead ends.
So they need to train their drivers then, right, to be able to back down the street, is what you're saying, I understand.
Whatever they got to do.
I don't know what the practice is, so it's.
That's all I had, I just wanted to.
Pete? You next?
Evening, gentlemen, ladies. Peak control 25 Newicki Street.
Eric Ballen, 132 West Street.
Roy Blair, 64 Shippey Avenue.
Unfortunately, we don't have a good rapport with flooding. Where do we go? We need relief. We had, we had Freddie come out, we had Freddie come out the last time, he reached out to you.
That is sick.
So, I fully understand, and I know a little bit about this situation. You know, Jay, I'll let you speak more of it, but one of the biggest issues.
He doesn't know anything, he hasn't even been there.
Hold on one second, but I do know the research and I've given him, and he's done his research on it. Okay? One thing that I had found out through all this stuff was, and I worked very closely with Councilman Drew, because half of Shippey Ave used to be mine before the redistricting. So he had always worked on trying to get it resolved, 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 and numerous times, and I didn't know Pete at the time, he always made it very vocal online to us and whatever it may be.
Correct.
So, at that time, the town, the town really got involved with a lot of different things and how to get that, we got it all designed, how to fix the drainage. The issue, wait a minute, the issue becomes, now the fact of the matter is, we need an easement through a property, through a resident who now the town condemned this house. So, so hold on, gentlemen, wait a minute, let me finish, let me finish. So now the town has been told basically where to go to pound sand. Mr. Carrulo here, through his actions, has been trying to get legislation passed, a letter written up to the legislation to get it done through some sort of eminent domain of some sort, I may be using the wrong word.
There is a way to get it through.
There, there is, and Mark is working on that. So we're still stuck in that pickle where we have to get through somebody's property to do so.
We understand that, but the problem that we have right now is that you have a $1.5 million grant sitting somewhere, have no clue where it is. You can start somewhere and help us out over there. I'm tired of losing tools in my garage.
We've all lost, we've all lost.
I had a bunch of people, a bunch of my friends over the last time I flooded with Freddie Gill in my garage.
Freddie Gill was there for two and a half hours.
Two and a half hours helping me and my friends, helping me with stuff in my garage, I had brand new furniture in my garage getting wet. I'm done, I don't know what else to do.
No, we're, we're, I commend Freddie for staying with us for two and a half hours.
He was a good guy to stay and help.
We actually, he's the one that actually told us to call you to get you to show up.
Well, I mean, to your defense, I mean, I'm not able to come there on a moment's notice, you know what I mean, at every given moment.
He reached out to you as a neighbor, I'm sorry, as a neighbor, you are a councilman, I called you up, I had you on speakerphone.
I was at dinner with my family, so I, okay.
Let him speak.
We had you, I had you on speakerphone.
Okay.
And everybody heard what you said to me, even Freddie Gill heard you.
Freddie was there, the police department was there, the fire department was there.
One at a time, gentlemen.
So, I'm kind of fed up. I want to sell my house, you know what I was told about a realtor?
You can't.
Can't sell because it floods, nobody's going to buy a flooded house.
You're right.
I reached out to you, you just, you said.
That was, that was on my words?
That wasn't the first time, you told me you worked all day and you didn't have time to come over. But I got Freddie Gill in my garage watching water come in and everybody else here.
Freddie's the one who said the councilman should be here, and that's when, and he has, you know, but that's when, that's when it was.
You want to see video, I got videos.
I mean, I know, I know, you don't have to convince me how awful it is, I do understand, but there was nothing physically I could do, I would go there and I would agree with you, yes, it's awful.
Hold on, gentlemen, gentlemen, in all fairness, for Freddie to say something like that, that we should be there at that hour, I, I don't disagree and I, and I don't agree because.
3:30 in the afternoon.
3:30 in the afternoon, you're not, I want to tell you what, gentlemen, if you called me, I worked till 5:30, I may not be able to get there till 7:00. I can't get there, if Freddie says, council, no department head should sit there and say, Dave Godzal, Angelo Bedouche should be here right now, that's not how it is.
No, I understand.
And I, and I totally.
Didn't say you should be here right now, I just called him for some help and some support.
But again, I understand that, now, trust me, I would be at your house, if I had, if you, my constituent, you called me up, I would tell you, I would be there tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM or whatever time I can get there, we don't get, and arrange that.
We don't get that.
Well, I mean, we do have people like Freddie Gill that are there, that's the support. What physically could I do?
Just come down and see what's going on over there.
I realized how bad it was, I agreed with you.
Yeah, but.
You haven't been there in person.
You haven't been there in person.
I have, I have gone on a tour with Freddie, with Dave Lombari, we took a tour for two hours.
Was it flooded?
Yeah, I've been by there, yes, I've been by there.
Hey, stop by, have a beer then, help me flush everything out.
I'll be by.
Come on down, have a beer.
No, no, all keep aside, that, that specific night, Freddie Gill said that this needs immediate action. I know Freddie's had another allegation tonight and we wish he was here because that's why, that's why we're here to bring this up. We need action, especially where I live.
Not, not next year, but you told me, next year.
That, that's what we're looking at, Mark, what are we looking at, if we get that easement, how long?
We need something done now.
I, I, I hear what you're saying, I understand what you're saying, but what you're asking for is not attainable.
What do you mean it's not?
I'm telling you.
I pay property taxes.
Can you hold on one second, please, please? Basically, you've got a flooding situation, the water has to be taken, it has to be red. Basically, you've got a flooding situation, the water has to be taken, it has to be redirected and put somewhere else. Right? The town has designed, has designed a solution for that, however, the solution includes a requirement that we obtain an easement across someone's property.
We understand, we need that property, but is there a plan B?
There is no plan B.
Why?
Because there is no ability to create a plan.
Then why even have that meeting last year, that brought everybody in the neighborhood over there and say, hey, everything's gonna be all set this spring?
I can't respond to a meeting, I'm not gonna get, if you wanna make an appointment, come in and sit down with me, I could explain to you how this works, I could explain to you what the design is.
Did you do something for now to help us?
There's.
Mark, he.
I guess we could provide sand, sandbags to stop the water from going into your garage. I understand what you're saying, but the water has to be redirected somewhere, has to be taken, and it has to be put somewhere else.
That's another problem, where we have, we have a bordering neighbor around all three of us, she's redirecting the water, because the water has no place to go, we called George up, George comes down, there's nothing I can do, I can, I can.
Serve with paper.
Serve with paper.
Yeah, you can swipe her, that's great.
But, where, where my property is, is Freddie's scene. Across the street, there's a large diameter pipe that's under the street, comes through my yard, it's only eight inches.
Yeah, it's.
It's choked.
Yes.
If you.
It's a bottle effect.
Exactly, and that's, that's my problem, their problem is up top, if you relieve my problem, it's gonna relieve some of their problem. I told Freddie, I said, Freddie, you can stop Monday morning and, and dig up my yard.
He spoke to me about it.
No problem, that's, that's, that's not even, that's a small fix.
We have the feeling we're being ignored down there.
I'm sorry that you feel that way?
So this has been going on for ten years, I understand that I was told from Ed Giroux.
When did you buy the house?
Six years ago. Well, we bought the house.
They didn't disclose to you that it flooded?
No, not even mine, even, and you know, you know who I bought mine, I, I believe from?
Nothing, but now I guess the law says you have to.
Yeah, you have to disclose.
So I can't sell my property.
But I mean, Mark, if Pete, and I understand, cuz I remember Ed fighting for, for this, for, for quite a few years, we just never had the money, and he obtained the road bond money, but, anyway, make a long story short. We were told, David, this goes back a few years, that you had a twelve-inch pipe trying to go into a little funnel, and the water's not going.
That's why I understand.
But if they can alleviate, divert the water from Pete's, where we don't need anything, at least we already did something to correct one problem, at least they see that something's getting done.
What's, what's the timeline for the green infrastructure portion of it?
Right, there's the other half, which is the green part.
Which is not, which is really.
Jay, let him speak first.
That's where the green is from.
For the rain basins, all that stuff was supposed to. Guys, I, I wanna be honest with you, I can't understand any of you right now.
One at a time.
I just, I just can't.
Well, now you see how upset we are.
Right, the fact of the matter is, when you start speaking and you interrupt, just go one at a time, make the record clear, and when you ask a question, wait for an answer.
So go back to your green, so I can understand what you were saying about the rain.
There, there's another portion of the project that was explained to us by Ed Giroux, that, that it's a green solution. Up top of the hill, there are areas that are right aways to the town, where they're gonna create little meadows where the water can run off into and then soak into the ground. Rain basins along Shippee Avenue, ripping up the sidewalks, putting them in the ground, redoing the sidewalks. Uh, bump basins, I believe, where the curbs kick out to help direct water in certain directions, to help alleviate the problem, which my house is ground zero. I have Agnes Pond, I have Agnes, uh, sorry, Agnes coming down.
West.
West, Shippee, you know, all coming down, and I have three drains on the high side of the street, one on the low. The basin goes one and a half feet down, goes nowhere. There's no, there's nothing there for, to take the water.
I got a question, any of you on the board right now have a freaking pump, gas pump in your garage or cellar? You have to pump out water every time it rains?
I have a constituent I'm dealing with, that I've been dealing with for a good five years.
How much water do you get?
He gets.
Me?
Yeah.
I'm above a swamp lane about ten feet from home also, I, I'm, I don't see it.
I get three feet of water in my garage, which means anything in that garage that is three feet lower is done.
No, I, sir, I've been by, I've seen pictures, I've seen your videos, I've seen your aerial footage of your house, I've seen everything.
All we're asking is something, please be done, and soon.
I, I, I welcome any, any of you.
I can, I can tell you right now, from what I've been seeing through emails, cuz I can see seat on it, is basically, he's doing his best to get legislation done, so we can work with that individual. Now, I've even, I've even come up with my own ideas with that individual homeowner, but as you heard earlier, there's a lot more issues going on in that apartment.
Now, I'm sure you heard about what happened with Freddie Gill, was in my driveway, scooping out dirt out of the drain. The lady in back of me called nine one one, wanted me arrested, cuz she thought I did it. And all he was doing was trying to help the situation of the water, that was the last time we flooded.
Yeah, but then the fire department got involved.
Then the fu, fire department and the police department got involved.
But my, my project has nothing to do with where he is. My project, I've argued with, with Fred, I've had Fred, I've had the town architect in my yard, everything was all measured out. And I was told this, I was told this, I, I, I spoke with Jay a, a couple of times, and, and I was told it was gonna start here, it was gonna, I just had surveyors in my yard, not three months ago, four months ago.
Down on my driveway too.
And.
Well, like I said, as soon as the easement got shut down, we got shut down.
But I, I don't understand why there's not another way or something you can do.
Here's the thing, here's the thing, Dave, it, the, the, the pipe that's gonna go through Mr. Galucci's property, you can do, it, there's a pipe already, an existing pipe, of the pipe that Dave wants to put, that's across the street from my house. There's no need for it to take that left and go through Galucci's property. Come out tomorrow, Dave, I, I'm willing to.
We're not engineers.
I'm willing to, willing to meet with you, Jay, come together.
I mean, I'm also not an engineer, so I'm not gonna be able to tell you anything that Dave Lombari's not gonna tell you.
Dave wants to put a two-foot pipe, I, I, through Galucci's field.
I know what he wants to do, but I mean, like I said, Dave knows more about it than I do, as far as the.
There's a pipe, there's eighteen inches, at least fourteen to eighteen inches, that goes through the property across from me. So you have, behind me, that's this big, then you come through my yard, which is this big. Then you come out of my driveway, on my driveway side, on the Newicki Street side, goes back to this bit, you're choking from, from here to here.
So why would it cost, Mark, why would it cost, if they have a fourteen-inch pipe already?
The pipe is collapsing too, my, I, I, because they.
Number one, the whole system is undersized, you got larger pipes running, smaller pipes.
So what happens when this pipe collapses? Because they, they, they were just out there, after the surveyor came, cuz I spoke with Dave, I believe it was, and Dave didn't believe me in the size of the pipe. The following day, I was sitting in my yard, the guys from DPW, they measured it, they measured the pipe, it's cracking, so what are we gonna do when it cracks? The water's gonna go nowhere, it's gonna, but, it's gonna go nowhere but through my yard. It's undermining my driveway, my back steps, the trees, that's, that's minor, that doesn't even touch what that grant was originally for.
Alright, well, I mean, we can schedule a meeting, whatever we need to do.
Absolutely, I, I have all the videos.
Mark can tell you what's going, well, there, everybody knows what's going on there.
I know.
It's just that you need to know what's truly being worked on, I, you know, I, unfortunately, I don't know if you were informed that he was trying to put legislation to get an eminent domain, but, again, the legislators are out of session, they don't go back until January. So that's what's postponing that portion of it, um, and you're not gonna, and trust me, even if they show up next week to vote on a budget, they're not gonna worry about a westward drain at this point, I understand.
You can stop, you can.
But, if there's, if there's something else, if there, if there's a retaining pond or something we can do, I don't know.
You can stop, I, I, I'm sorry.
But you guys gotta remember one thing, you, you said it yourself earlier, once you do, fix your issue and cause issues down the road, we now have ten other people in here next month saying, well, you just fixed theirs and caused my issue. So that's why it's gotta be done right, and done right the first time.
Three people here with a problem.
There's more than, there's more than three people that are affected by this problem.
No, I, I understand, I, I agree with Jay.
Well, maybe, yeah, maybe I get a little minor flooding, but we're losing property.
But see, the, 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 the problem with Dave goes beyond me, it goes into that trench, the trench that runs parallel upon you. So, what's, but, it, it goes.
It actually goes all, actually goes all the way down, I remember walking this entire thing.
Yeah, it comes out by choice, the, the mill.
Correct, yeah, at the Nack Hill Mill, it goes all the way down there. It goes all the way through, basically, attic, all the way down to that pond that he had dredged out.
Unlived tracks.
It goes, that drainage from there, all the way back to your neighborhood, needs to be replaced.
That trench is. If that trench is this big, which one?
You're talking a multi-million dollar project, I, I, so when you say I don't know anything about it, I know I walked with Councilman Giroux back in his day, and I, and I knew much about the project, I knew exactly what had to be done, just funding and money. Now, when Councilman Giroux was up here, and every time we had a road bond, or put, put a million dollars away, or five hundred thousand dollars away to, to dredge a pond, uh, or do whatever to try to correct the drainage over there. I know, what's he got in there, I don't, I'm not even sure what they have for the, uh, grant.
One point five.
One point five, minus seventy thousand.
Minus seventy thousand for what?
For the engineers.
So.
The surveyors.
They've applied for other grant money through the state, some, some other grants.
Right, there was a small one that, that Ed.
And we, and we continue to do that, and I, I do it for Brecken Street, I have the same thing.
I mean, I, I was.
The town drains entirely into his property, I mean.
I, I was told, two years ago, by, by, um, Fred Preston, that there was a small, some small fund that, oh, this is, this is a quick fix for you. I've lost sheds, leaf blowers, weed whackers, lawn mowers, I've lost a lot of big money, and I'm gonna, and, and I don't wanna, I, I shouldn't say this, but I'm going to. The woman that's behind him, you get this woman involved? You guys are in for a treat.
You think Whitman?
You're talking class action suit with this woman, who's throwing it around, Freddie was there.
We'll, we'll, we'll get with Dave Lombari and Freddie and Mark, and we'll, we'll figure it out with Councilman Giroux.
So in other words, we have to set up a meeting with you, correct, Mark?
That'd be fine.
If Freddie, if Freddie has some sort of quick fix that.
I, I, I spoke with Freddie.
Freddie, Freddie told us to come here the, the, the following day, which we did, and, and Mark was on vacation, so, and I understand that, I respect that.
I spoke with Freddie about the issue, and, and, you know, he mentioned that, he would be willing to get the town an easement through your property, cuz there is, while there's a pipe there, there's no easement in there.
I'll give you anything you want to, to save my property.
I, I understood, but at the end of the day, unless the whole project is tied in to remove that water, the issue's not gonna be resolved.
I think, it, it, in, in my humble opinion, there's, there's, there's people in here that deal with water flow every day, and drain.
It's gonna resolve one of them, for sure.
It's gonna resolve, it's gonna resolve up top.
It's gonna help out.
It's gonna help, help out everybody, up top.
Let's move on, and then we'll, we'll get this all squared away.
Alright, so, set up an appointment with, with Mark?
Mark, set it up, and then, okay, Mark, let me know what it is, and I'll come in.
Alright, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
John Reed, sixty-two Andrews Avenue. I'm just looking for some advice with the planning board. I'm with the planning board on June fifth, and you look at.
Excuse me, Mr. Reed, you were just speaking from the microphone.
And I asked multiple questions. At the end of the questions, I was told by the president of the planning board, that, uh, there's nothing the planning board could do for me, and he wasn't the police. All my issues had to do with paperwork, it had to do with plans, had to do with deeds, and stuff that was registered in the town. So who controls the planning board? I know you appoint them. So it's a, it's a rogue, it's a rogue entity.
No, it's not a rogue entity, it's governed by state laws, governed by the town charter.
So in other words, you have to go to the, uh, uh, Ethics Commission, if you have issues with them?
Depending on what your issues are.
Well, if I go to a town planner, I come to you as a lawyer, and I ask you a legal question, you tell me you can't help me, go see the police, well then I guess, you're not too good a lawyer, you know what I'm saying?
That's all to be determined at a later date, I guess, but the point is, if you say, I've got a problem with the planning board.
Yes.
I don't know if you have a problem with the planner.
No, I have no problem with the.
No, 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 you, you haven't said anything distinctly clear, you said the planning board, which encompasses. Well, if I go into this deeply. Let me, let me finish, this is what good lawyers do, they talk a lot, the planner, the planning attorney, the five members of the planning board, any of the officers, alright? Now, you're gonna say to the council, what can you do, the council appoints, the only thing the council can do on the appointment is rescind the appointment, period. Council has no control over the management or the administration, or what the planning board does, or the zoning board does, or any other board they appoint. So if you're, if you're not happy with a decision of the planning board, or if you're not happy with the way the planning board worked its way through a certain issue, uh, came up with a conclusion, came up with a finding, came up with a ruling, and then submitted, uh, confirmed it with writing, then you gotta bring it before them, and if you don't like what they do, you can appeal it, then you're in the Superior Court.
How about if they do nothing, and you say that it's not my problem?
Well, at that point in time, I can't really address, because I don't know exactly what your problem is, or not, excuse me, not your problem, but what they're saying is not their problem.
Okay. Most of it I can't go into, because we're into this litigation thing, okay?
And you and I both know that because you've retained counsel, and you've put the town on notice, there's really not, we can discuss in public.
I just wanna see if you had any control of the planning board, I can.
The town council, like I said, the only, the council appoints pursuant to the charter, and can rescind an appointment. However, it's really not clear about what, um, you would require, or the council would require, to rescind an appointment, would you need cause? Or can you just do it because you have a majority of the council, it's really not clear.
Well, I think maybe the council should, maybe investigate it?
Well, that's a different issue.
Okay, it's a touchy subject, which we can't bring most of it out in public, but it's critical.
You're asking, you're asking to really have a council investigate what you're already asked the council, you, you, on one hand, you want the council to investigate the same claim you're making against the council. What do you mean though? Your, your attorney sent a letter dated July twenty first, twenty seventeen, that I'm not gonna get into, to the members of the Honorable Town Council, asking them to do something. So now you want the council that, to investigate the same thing that they're supposed to, you know, revoke?
No, this has to do with other issues, no, I'm, I'm, I'll give you something else, we'll, we'll get past that, I mean, I got something better for you. When it comes to the planning board records, okay?
Yes.
Meetings, are they secured?
Um, what do you mean secured?
I know they're online, okay, they're archived.
The town clerk, women, the town clerk can answer any questions as it relates to what documents that she has, but the town council, the town solicitor, the town planner, and the planner would not have the records.
No, you don't have the records.
So for example, agendas, meeting minutes, et cetera.
Are they secured?
Under, I don't know what you mean by secured, they're under the control of the clerk.
Can anybody get into them and change them?
No.
No. You're sure of this? Absolutely positive.
You have an audio tape, and I don't, is there a videotape?
The audio tape only works when it feels like it.
Is it, is there an audio tape of planning board meetings?
There's audio, I'm not sure if they're videotaping yet.
No, they, no, they all are videotaping, they should be, they should be now.
But they're two minutes up online, under, um, planning, and, um.
There's a certain bunch that are under planning, which is.
So.
I'm sure of the temperature.
Sure.
If you're looking for plans, who on earth is gonna go look in that section?
What do you mean, who's gonna look at it?
Because you've got the whole agenda when you go.
Listen, 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 usually when.
Why do you wanna go look to see what the town planner does, to see a paragraph of, oh, wait, we got some town minutes in the middle of two paragraphs?
Well, listen, I don't understand how they put it together, and I don't understand the technology, but the point I'm getting, the, well, listen, the point what I'm trying to get at is, there's an, you would agree there's an agenda, right?
I agree there's an agenda.
You would agree that there's minutes?
I also agree that there's a whole page.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, have you gotten all the minutes of all the meetings?
Only after the news team came here.
Alright, so now, that's a curve ball that I'm not gonna swing at, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna swing at that one.
Tim?
Sure.
I provided a copy of the notice, the decision, the minutes, and the plan to Mr. Reed's attorney via email.
Wait a minute, I don't think he's talking about that, you're talking about something different.
He's talking about minutes?
No, no, no.
Okay.
General minutes.
I have no issue with you, don't even get your blood pressure up, this has nothing to do with the situation you're talking about.
John, this issue about meeting minutes, alright, Marion could address that, because under the rules of the Secretary of State, a body, a legislative body, is supposed to, when they record it, they're supposed to post them. I can't tell you what the timeframe is, because.
The timeframe doesn't matter.
Then you just, then I'm confused.
Can I speak, and then you won't be confused?
You raised the point about minutes, and I asked you the question, did you get all the minutes you asked for, yes or no?
Yes, but that's what it means, I'm talking in general.
Right, okay.
In, in general, okay, you go on the town website.
Sure.
Where would you go to look for the minutes for this meeting right now, where would you go?
The town meetings.
Town meetings, okay, would you go to town, uh, council president, would you go to the planning board?
No, you go to town meetings.
So if you go there, and you're looking for certain minutes, well, guess what, all you, don't exist there.
Well, then you would go.
You have to, you have to go look and see what the town planner does.
But John, what'd you call it?
And then there's a power little thing over here that says, minutes, hold on, Timmy, hold on, I didn't tell me to play. Then this pops up, there's twelve meetings that, where'd they come from? Oh, wait a minute, I'm gonna shock you even more, they can be secured, nobody gonna edit them, hold on a second. You guys have made your problem when you go there. We'll give it an easy one first. So, what year that was written, according to that plan?
Nineteen forty-two.
Oh, were neighbors around here in nineteen forty-two?
What was that, a typo?
It's a typo.
Typo, well, you go on the website and you can change it.
What do you mean?
John, John.
You go on the website, you can change it.
Is your, is your point that it's nineteen forty-two, it said me in two thousand seventeen?
No.
What's your point?
My point is, you, you can go on the website.
Did you alter that?
I altered it.
You altered it.
You did that?
You can alter these documents.
Sorry, let me ask you something, wait, you keep saying, wait a minute.
Change the wording.
When did you, when did you do anything that changed the wording? Or did you change the wording in any of these things?
Yeah.
Okay, so, this goes right back to the issue that's before I have the town right now, the complaint.
That's on something else.
So that's right, what you just gave me. I understand, you changed, right.
To my.
Right, so my question to you is, simply this, when you found out that there's a problem with the technology, who did you contact?
I just found out the other day, but when I went to, let's go back to the planning board.
Okay.
They don't wanna hear this.
Wait a minute, let me.
If you're saying that.
You want to see the original?
Wait a minute.
In the original.
How can a citizen?
This is the right one.
Wait, I don't know, any, all this stuff right here, but.
Before you answer the question, I'll ask a question.
No, I wanna ask a question.
Everything that he's provided is gonna be verified, and the fact of the matter is, Elaine Mansour is the planning clerk, alright, she's not here, number one, Mary Ann, can you answer any questions by Mr. Reed about how, as a member of the public, he was able to revise a man, or change any of these things?
I just mentioned to Mark that I have a, a system in my computer that can convert, uh, can allow me to change PDFs, but you wouldn't be able to post that.
I can change it, I can, I can delete it.
Wait, wait, but you would not be able to post something that said nineteen forty-two, so you could take that yourself and change that, that, you could do that, but you're not gonna post it, so what we would go by, what's online.
Changing the town records.
Well, you wouldn't be able to post it.
Wait, can I, can I just get clarification?
Wait, wait, on your computer, you're, so you're saying you downloaded?
Didn't download it.
Hold on, hold on, you made a copy.
No.
Alright, so then how did you produce this?
Went in directly.
Can I get clarification, you, you changed it on our website?
Yes.
So you didn't like, bring it on your computer, you changed it on our website, like you would do a Wikipedia or something?
Yeah, you just go right into the, right into the thing, you click the, that certain minutes, it pops up in Word.
That's a different issue then.
It pops up in Word.
That's different, you're not changing our website, yeah.
Oh, wait a minute.
It pops up in Word, and you can change anything you want.
It's not changing on our website.
Yeah, it doesn't change it.
You're not, you're not changing what's recorded.
One of the times, gentlemen.
I didn't hit save, because I didn't know what it was.
No, 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 what I'm saying is, if you are looking at this, and what, it's in Word.
Word document.
If you're looking at it in Word document, you can change it, then you can print it, and come up with this, but what you've just done on your computer has not affected what's in the town records.
I don't wanna commit fraud.
You can commit fraud, I guess.
That's an easy way to do it, I'm not gonna tell them, I'm not gonna do this shit.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
But it's supposed to be secured.
John, John, you just said you changed it, so if we were to pull up the meeting minutes from whatever this refers to, February first versus February.
Early nineteen forty-two.
These meeting minutes won't be changed by what you did.
That's what I'm asking you people, that's why I asked you, it's a pure.
You can change it on your computer, you can change it on your computer, it's not gonna change what's here.
Are you supposed to be able to do that?
I don't know.
How many more documents in the zoo?
No, John, I don't know.
The, the whole system, you've got a five pound this, how much water is exposed out there, people get themselves.
John, I get things sent to me all the time in a certain format that allows me to make amendments and send them back, usually they're redlined, okay, but the basic agreement, if Al sends me something, he's got the basic agreement, uh, excuse me, agreement, if he sends it to me in a certain format, I can make amendments and send it back. Now, if you're saying that you downloaded, John, you looked at it on the screen, I, I'm not, I'm not a tech guy, I don't know, but you changed it, the question is, did you change it for the rest of it by not hitting send?
I don't know.
I don't know either. But you're, you're raising the issue, so I mean, the town manager, the town clerk, now I've got to see what, what you're saying is true, confirm what you're saying is true, and then change it going forward, but I don't know if what you did at your home changed anything here.
I didn't, I didn't say, yes. What have we changed or not, I don't know.
I mean, I know, I know as a finance director, I do have IT. I do have some IT responsibility, I do oversee IT, I, one thing I can add to it, if you have a PDF document, a PDF document cannot be changed, I think we all can agree to that. Most of the documents that are minutes on the website are PDF documents, people can download them, print them, do what they want, it appears, based on what you're telling, or what you're saying, that it, it may be, these minutes are being posted as a Word document that someone downloads. Once they download it, it's on their local computer, they can make changes to that document locally, but that does not allow it to be uploaded to the town's website. But someone can produce, if a Word document is there, someone can change it.
But, but hold on one second, if, if Mr. Reed produced this document to us, said, this is my document nineteen forty-two. Hold on, one second, the court will go into our website and see two thousand sixteen or two thousand seventeen, so they could say, and I'm not accusing you of anything, that they could say, he doctored it, but then, the, the true document isn't the town website.
The official record is on the town website, however, in my opinion, they should not be Word documents, they should be PDF documents, as a, as a, as a general practice.
For the record, our clerk doesn't post that, that's the town planner's question.
Now, as a general practice, as, when it comes to the financial documents that I post, I purposely do not post the Excel documents, because they can be modified, printed, and someone could actually take them and say that those are the documents on the site, the official records are on the town's website.
Okay, now, the twelve meetings that are not on the, the regular meeting page that I showed you, those are the twelve that you can change, the ones that are sitting under the explanation of the town planner. I don't understand how that got over there, and those twelve, you can get into. No, I know you don't either, so.
It's, it's basically.
I think somebody needs to find out.
I, I think I can answer it, it's the way Elaine's posting the minutes, she's posting it in a Word document, not a PDF document.
Okay, but then this has been going off a way over a year, how many other town documents might be?
Seems like all the planning board.
What, do we know that?
Wait, 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 wait.
I think you need to do a forensic audit on your documents.
You changed documents, alright, you're questioning whether or not anybody else did.
I don't know.
Right, I don't know, I don't know either, let's say there was none, or there was ten, but the point what I'm trying to get at is, if the document that's on the town's record has not been changed, because it's been, you guys or ten other people have changed it on the outside, but that document still has not been changed, that's the same document that gets posted to, uh, Secretary of State, correct?
No, she doesn't post minutes to the Secretary of State.
Okay.
It became laws of January first, two thousand eighteen.
Alright, so, so, right now, the only where it's, the only where it's posted?
Coming up.
The only where it's posted would be the town's website.
Yes.
Alright, so the town's website, if that can't be altered, even if you put it in a Word document versus a PDF, whatever's in the town system is what, what the record is, alright, so the question you would have is, see if anything's been changed.
Hit save.
Yeah, hit save. Mark Rulo is gonna get a million dollar raise, hit save, as the planner.
Mark Rulo signing up for a lifetime appointment of town manager.
Just, ju- ju- just to clarify somewhat, on my computer.
Yes.
I have all of the minutes, all of the decision letters, all of the, um, notices.
In what format?
But it's, mine is the, the official, they're, they're in, they're, they're, they're not in PDF, they're in Word, but they're mine.
Alright.
And they're, they're secured on my computer, they're not accessible over the internet, right, so that is the official document, the official document's what's in the file, not what's posted on the, on the website.
Okay.
But if someone wanted to alter a document, I guess, whether it be a PDF or not be a PDF, you can actually download a PDF, convert that to a Word document, and alter that yourself, too.
Right.
There's technology to do that.
But now, if somebody came in with an altered document, and then you compared it to what you have.
I compare it to my document.
It's not the same.
It wouldn't be the same, correct.
What, what really needs to be done here is.
But I, I get the point, and we'll convert those to PDF.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, meeting with Elaine and making sure she's downloading them properly.
Who does the minutes, Elaine does?
Yes, Elaine Little Stranger does those twelve, that are sitting under your name, and I'm not saying you, Mark.
No, no, I, I, I understand.
That is the, the way to, you're gonna look for it, did you see it?
I haven't been on it. Oh, I seen your, your, uh.
The description of the town planner, on the data, oh, click for minutes, who's gonna go look for that for minutes? You go look for this if you wanna see about the town planner.
John, they're gonna check it out, they're gonna make everything right, so when it comes up on the, on the, uh, website, you're gonna know where it is.
And I just, I get into this because of all this other stuff, you know, the more I look for something that I need, the more foolishness I find. Now, when I go pull up your documents, and I can hit it with my son, and I can start editing, I'm like, are you kidding?
John, I'm the only guy up here without a computer, you understand, right, so, no one's, no one's gonna amend or edit my notes.
No.
Right, but that stuff, I mean, if it's not secured, the managers are gonna look at it, they can secure it.
Isn't it critical?
The IT guys, I don't know.
Isn't it critical to the public?
I would guess so, sure, but.
I mean, I could get one of these documents, change it.
You just told you.
I wanted to say to somebody.
Well, John, and that's, and that's where.
I did you a favor.
The actual, the actual order, or actual document, actual judgment, he's got, so if anybody tried to, say, record something that he didn't have, the person who tried to record it is in trouble, not him.
There's also record, there should be a recording, a, a WAV file somewhere of the entire meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, there's a, there's an audio of every planning board meeting.
What did you call it, a WAV file?
WAV.
A WAV, sorry.
It's a extension.
Yes.
There's a, there's a WAV file every planning board meeting.
We, we videotaped everything.
She heard WAV is going to the beach.
If I can just add, if I can just wa- add one element to this, the point you made about the minutes being on the planning, one of the ideas besa- or the concepts behind, behind the Granicus system, was for all the minutes, I'm sorry, for all the meetings, to be in the same location, be in one location, minutes, agenda, video, WAV files, whatever files you wanna, have it one central location, because there have been situations where, some meetings were here, some meetings were there, and it seems like planning might be lagging behind in that sense, but that's something we can fix.
No, this is where, this is where I, I brought it up last meeting, Elaine has come to me, Paula has come to me, and I've asked the bank for our buck with this Granicus and whatever, because everybody says, we need to get rid of it, that's why I'm asking if it's user friendly, because our employees are complaining about the, the process, um, they post things, they send it to Granicus, Granicus, right?
Correct.
And, and all of a sudden, a page that they scan to them doesn't get put online, so then we're chewing them out, because we're sitting here in a council meeting, saying, where's this, where's that, or how come the attachment's not here, but yet, the next day, Paula will show me, I sent it to her, look, it's right here.
And, and I did men- you did mention that in a previous meeting, and I had kinda given a brief explanation on it, the Granicus system is one system that has different elements, the agenda management function is what they're having trouble with, that's what actually puts together the agenda, puts together the attachment, posts to the website, once the meeting takes.
Personally, it should be in a section, town meetings, then it should be town council meetings.
Right, correct.
Planning board meetings, zoning board meetings, pension board meetings, and whatever other meetings are going on in this town, so that way there, when they go to town meetings, they don't have to go through, 'cause the, the old way was actually, it shows, town council, planning, sewer, planning, town council, zoning, and I'm like, that, that's ridiculous to look for, it should be in subs- subsections, and that way there, if somebody has a question, and, and I know John had called me and said, I can't find this, I said, well, I'll have to look into it, emails went back and forth, Elaine told me where everything was, I said, John, this is where everything is.
And right, right now, those meetings right now are posted in a chronological order, right, wrong, or different, that's the way they're posted, within the Granicus system, but again, the issues that you're hearing about are the agenda management portion that Paula and a few other people are having trouble with.
But now, do we ever have these problems before, whenever we were on, why all of a sudden, I keep hearing Granicus, I'm getting complaints from her, upstairs, downstairs, why is Granicus such a problem? If it's a problem, shit can him, period.
I think that the agenda portion is very confusing, I don't post agendas, I have figured out.
Things shouldn't be confusing.
And I hope everybody posts minutes, so.
This shit shouldn't happen.
The agendas portion is still a sort of a challenge.
Well, I mean.
What about the audio and the video? Some got it, some don't, some have. I don't know.
Well, if you.
These small meetings, it's all they have is, is minutes, there's no audio.
But again, the administrative rules, that's theirs, if they don't wanna go within, uh, the video, they don't have to, the state law says you have to have. No, the state law says you have to have minutes, does it really say specifically audio or video?
What about the minister, I'm not saying what anybody said, just so-and-so was there, okay, big deal, so-and-so, what'd he say?
That's a different issue, because that's something.
That's what you got here.
John, I'm trying to explain to you, if you don't think that the minutes support would actually happen, then you can bring it to the Attorney General's office.
Well, I guess that's really the one.
On a civil matter, not the ethics issue, so if you think there's an open meetings violation, for example, somebody said two plus two equals four, you go to look for it, and there's nothing there.
It just said he was there.
It says, it says mathematical equation, alright, if you don't think that's sufficient, you can bring it to the Attorney General through the Civil Division and say, is it a violation of the Open Meetings Act? Now, they're gonna tell you that there's no law to have a video and or audio recording, but law decisions, the law says you have to have minutes.
Okay.
Now, if you don't think the minutes are as extensive as they should be, then you could question them on that, they're gonna tell you whether you're right or wrong, or, you know, the tie goes to the right.
I was on the agenda, Tom.
Yes.
Okay, there would be minutes of what I said, right now, what we're talking about doesn't never show up.
There wouldn't be minutes of what you said, it's not verbatim.
There'd be the tape.
You'd have the tape.
You would have the tape that you could listen to, you can get audio tape from any, yes.
There'd be the tape, okay, I agree, alright, now, if you went to the planning board, okay, during their planning board meeting, they have no video, no audio, and you'll get the minutes, the minutes, most of them say so-and-so was there, so-and-so was there, what did so-and-so say?
Did you have any conversation at all with Elaine Mansour?
No.
Okay, she's the clerk of the planning, alright, Alde Fieri's sitting right behind you as the attorney for the planning.
I know, alright.
You have any conversations with him?
No.
Okay, so now you're coming to the council to raise this issue, and I think the council's gonna thank you, but right now, you still have the right to go to the planning board and say.
I've been to the planning board.
But you didn't get any satisfaction?
I don't know, no, they called the police, I spoke to the police.
You didn't, you didn't get any satisfaction, go to the Attorney General.
That's where I'm gonna go, but I have to come here first.
Not really.
Under recommendation, I'm gonna go, she, I don't think he's gonna do that anyway.
Well, alright, okay, well, I guess we're in agreement.
We're in agreement, alright.
Anything else?
No, I just wanna know that somebody's gonna think that this is saving us the fixing.
Now, the council, the council, the manager, and the clerk are gonna take a look, Angela brought up a good issue, Angela, I have a mistake, hasn't Granicus been around like for four years?
And, uh, ever since three years or whatever, nothing but problems, we brought it up last meeting, again, complaints from our administrat-
It probably the hot item four years ago, and now it's not so hot, but.
Yeah, now that we got it.
I'd just like to go back to work, see if they can put a little less. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Sir? Another entertaining meeting for you, sir? I'm gonna start charging this kid.
Uh, I'm hungry, so I won't make this long.
That's because that councilman right there said this was gonna be a short meeting, and I said to him, every time a councilman says that, we don't get out before ten o'clock, and here we are.
He tried unjinxing it, because he said, you think it's gonna be short?
Not tonight.
I'm sorry, go ahead, I was just being.
Uh, I just have a couple of questions about, uh, the town manager's search, uh, I'm new here, so maybe there's a regulation that I don't know about, so, uh, please fill me in, uh, first question, uh, you had a closed meeting two weeks ago, something like that, for the search, correct? Last. Last week? Last week. Okay, uh, how'd it go? Good, bad, you don't have to give a lengthy explanation.
I don't know how much detail I can share, as of right now.
Real reality, sir, the only thing they can say is that, that's it.
Okay, okay, fine, uh, so, since we had a closed public meeting, uh, just wondering, is there any specific reason it was closed?
First off, it's not a closed public meeting, it's a closed meeting of the town council.
So, the reason why.
Bad words.
Hold on one second, the reason why it was an executive session, there were interviews of each person, and I just, if, you've been here for, I think, three, four meetings now, where you've listened to, where some individuals wanted to keep their names anonymous, and we interviewed four individuals, and at that point, we're moving forward and see where we go from there, we're waiting for answers, and the council has decided with different answers, uh, waiting for an answer, and we'll go from there, once we know more, then we'll, if, if a person accepts a position, we'll announce that as soon as possible.
Okay, um, so, well, since there's been a closed meeting, uh, is there any chance for public to know beforehand, before the town manager is selected? Any, no, like?
We like a couple of them. Now, we gotta see if one or the other accepts the job.
I would expect, I would expect by September, we'll have something.
Wait, 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 you're not supposed to discuss anything with the subject that you met, so.
Well, I'll forget that, then, okay.
No, you don't have to, I said, we like a couple of them.
Okay.
Well, we'll likely have some kind of update by September, whatever that update may be.
Well, okay, fine, I, I understand, uh, that you can't have it public, just, I, I, I guess maybe, I don't know if it's an unreasonable question to ask, but, what, what's the barrier that keeps it from being public?
The point is, you elect the town council, the town council selects the town manager, the process for which they do it is under law, so, as long as it's under law, to, you can be in executive session to discuss the credentials, qualifications, ask questions, ask embarrassing things, ask personal things, so that's why it's done in the executive session, to protect whatever privacy interest they may have as it relates to maybe an embarrassing situation, or maybe something else, but the point is, you've elected them, and they give you the, the manager when they decide.
And, and can you?
You may not like it, but that's what, that's what the law allows.
And could you imagine the, where? And could you imagine that we're interviewing the town manager candidates, you know, this rowdy crowd some days? Probably would be a little bit of a circus.
I know, that was the exciting thing.
So let me ask you this, could you imagine that we had three people in mind, one, two, and three? We told you who our number one pick was. Number one declines it, now we move on to number two. Number two says, "Well, wait a minute, you didn't offer it to me first, you offered it to me."
I don't want it.
So number three, "Wait, I'm third on the list?" Nah, we don't wanna tell you. There you have it, it's reported to the press, the bonding companies look at it and go, "Alright, here's three applicants that would not take the job in West Warren." Minus, minus, minus. And every time we do the bond rating, we gotta go look at that, we couldn't get three people to come to West Warren. So there's a lot of reasons why things are held private, it's not to be not transparent, it's the fact that-
So, so is your, I don't wanna misunderstand you, is the argument that if it was public, at least, it doesn't have, everything doesn't have to be public, of course, but is the argument then that they wouldn't accept the job?
No, 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 just put, you're number one.
Okay.
The town council says tonight that you're number one. You're already working in another city of town. The press from that city of town, because it says, "We understand that you're gonna accept the West Warren job." You say, "No, I'm not, because they're not gonna give me enough money," alright? So now, the second and third picks, who may be somebody from town or somewhere else, hey, you're gonna get it, they withdraw. Then all of a sudden, you say, "I'm not gonna take the job for that money, sorry, I'm gonna stick with the place," because your current employer decides to give you a raise. So now, after six weeks or six months of this type of exercise, you're going, the other two people aren't interested anymore, they're gonna start all over.
Well, I guess my question, maybe I didn't make myself clear, it wasn't so much that I wanted to know who was your favorite, it was just that, I'm a curious guy, and I like to know things.
You like pro football?
How?
No, no, do you like it?
It's okay.
Do you like the draft?
Not really.
Okay, you know how that works out? No team's ever gonna tell you who their first draft pick is, even though you may know it. Because that changes the spectrum a lot of times, with money, a lot of different things.
Okay. Here's the only thing I'm gonna say, is I'm hungry, and I wanna leave.
I knew I'd get you that.
Uh, the only thing I'll say is that pro football is not democracy.
Well, sure is.
Alright, come on, guys, come on. Alright, it's 10:15 at night.
It's not government.